At eight percent because of course, interest rates are still really high. And when it comes to a household, buying a car, buying a house, these are real costs. And in fact, the average American is borrowing more now than they were two years ago by a pretty considerable margin. I think it explains why people are still so miserable, even though it looks like inflation is much lower.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the big takeaway point. A smaller one, though, is it's a good thing you and I don't work at the Fed. That is a hard job because if you're trying to battle inflation, what do you do? You raise interest rates. But if you include the higher interest rates in the inflation calculation, you have flipped a switch to make inflation higher.
Oh, you just said the quiet part out loud. That is literally the Fed's job when they raise rates. The goal is to make things so expensive, people can't afford them anymore. And when they buy less, the price eventually stabilizes.
Very interesting. Christopher Lowe, chief economist, FHN Financial. Thank you for the briefing.
Thank you, David.
I'm David Brancaccio. This is the Marketplace Morning Report. From APM, American Public Media.
Worldwide, millions of children grow up in orphanages. In Uganda, these facilities get support from abroad, but there are questions about how much the kids benefit from that money.
While good intentions underlie, orphanages and children's homes are not having the kind of impact and outcomes we would hope.
Uganda's Orphanages, our series runs next week on The World. The World, Monday through Thursday afternoons at three on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville.
Good morning. The March 4th city council meeting is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk Susan McCord to please call the board.
Yes. Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Valison.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. And of course, President. We're pleased today to have the Architectural Review Board with us today, and I will ask our Secretary to please call their room.
Thank you. And Mr. Valison, Mr. Ditz, and Mr. Allen, Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mr. Brothers, Ms. Reynolds, here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Alom.
Here.
All right. Well, we're delighted to have you with us today. We, we try as a council to meet with most of our board at least once a year when we can, and so many. But we want to first of all, just thank you all for the work and commitment and time that you spend on issues. And I had a chance to meet with Mr. Mason. He and I talked a lot about a few things. It may come up in our discussion this morning. But we're delighted to have you. And so with that, I'm going to recognize the Vice Chairman, Mr. Hussein Alom, who will really, I recognize you for any remarks, and then we can just discuss the issues that may be on the table.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I think, you know, on your behalf, as your counsel, we work diligently every month to kind of follow the guidelines and the bylaws of Architectural Review Board and look at the cases and hear. So I think today we're going to try to keep it focused and directed to a few of the issues at hand. And I just want to kind of quickly give the general overview of what we're looking at and then hand it over to our staff, who is very, very qualified to give some detailed discussion and deliberation on it. As you all know, and, and, you know, with the history of it, it was 1979 when ARB was established and, you know, four-plus decades of, of hard work by the community to make sure our history is preserved. We are given the task to, to essentially preserve the historic fabric within, within reason, help and encourage the community to follow the guidelines and the bylaws and, and what they have put together as the community, what the mayor and council has put together, and we kind of use those guidelines and, and details to help guide them in the right direction. And sometimes we hit roadblocks, sometimes it's little big blocks, and sometimes the technology is changing, and we don't really know the answer to it. So we, we deliberate a good bit in, in recent years. You know, I've been on the board several years, and we've had some, some major discussions. And what we like to do is have our board, you know, be as, as in sync with your board and make sure we have your directive and, and also pass the baton on to the residents of the city to say, hey, you know, this is what we want, this is how we want to preserve the history of Roanoke. And with that said, I will kind of pass the microphone to Ms. Gray and Mr. Musavi to get into the details.
We're going to start talking about just overall history within the city of Roanoke and how one of the things that I've always appreciated about the city of Roanoke is that, that it is valued here. And so we've had, so the city's been around for over 100 years, and we've had a comprehensive plan for over 100 years. And that's not something that every area's had. And in every part of those comprehensive plans, starting in the citizen plan created in 1907, followed up in the 1928 plan that the city made, all the way through to what we have today with City Plan 2040, preservation of our community has been important, historic preservation. There's value in what we have in the built form of our environment within the community. And you see it today, even in our current comprehensive plan, where we talk about preserving our culturally, historically, and architecturally significant buildings and sites within our community as being one of the key things we need to do for how we grow our community. And so, looking at historic preservation in the city of Roanoke, there, there was a lot of valuing of it, but there was also some not valuing of it. And in the seventies, as Mr. Alom mentioned, you were starting to see things being torn down, and the community was concerned. And so, the, the National Registered Districts were created to help with preservation, and local preservation districts were created in 1979 for the H1 district in our downtown area. And then it was expanded out. In 1985, the National Registered District for the Old Southwest area was created. And in 1987, the local H2 Historic District was created, and the ARB was given the responsibility to administer this for the city of Roanoke, for both of these districts. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Parvise Musavi, our Historic Preservation Planner.
Thank you, Catherine. And Mr. Alom, good morning, some mayor, board members. Historic Preservation Planner with the city of Roanoke, planning, building, and development. And I've been in this position for the past nine and a half years proudly. So just going over the mission of the Architectural Review Board, based on the zoning ordinance, the mission of the ARB is to preserve, protect, enhance the character of significant historic architectural or cultural properties located within the historic districts. Also, the ARB administers the regulations and to review new constructions, alterations, and demolition of structures located within the historic districts for compatibility and appropriateness with the existing scale and character of the district. And there's a certificate of appropriateness is required for all exterior alterations, new construction, demolition, that is issued by either the board or staff on that process. So there are other, I guess, responsibilities that the board has, the Architectural Review Board has. They do recommend historic landmark status and historic district protection for properties of significant historic architectural or cultural values in the city. The city of Roanoke is a certified local government, and that means the city planning department may and can apply for grants through the state to protect historic resources through creation of National Registered District. As an example, currently, we're working on Norwich Plan, which would be completed by July, if we finalize by July this year. And Belmont and other National Registered Districts are other examples. And other responsibilities are for the ARB is to assist applicants in maintaining and enhancing contributing, the contributing architectural features of historic buildings through informal workshops and individual work session. So the ARB holds two meetings in each, in each month. One is the work session to review the application, to ensure that the application is including everything that they need to look at and review and approve, hopefully. And the final meeting, which is the actual public hearing, they review and make recommendations and, not recommendations, but actually vote and approve or deny applications. And last but not least, to provide architectural and design expertise, we have architects on, on the board, we have historic preservation-minded groups, we have different mentalities in terms of the historic preservation, and they've done a fantastic job as far as I understand. So, excuse me. As the agent of the Architectural Review Board, I am authorized to review and sign off on certain applications. Just a quick example would be a rear or side deck that they want to add. So that's something, there are many other things that I'm allowed to do. So just to let you know, I do that. And also, I do inspect all the certificate of appropriateness approvals, because they're good for a year, and within that year period, I set up on my calendar, and I do inspect those properties to just to make sure that it complies with the approval, whether board approval or staff approval. If I can go ahead and change it. So as I mentioned, certificate of appropriateness, we want to make sure that the, there's a justification for alterations. That's the one, the first step that is done. And effect of the changes or alterations of properties and, on the surrounding properties and on the property itself, the design shall be compatible with the character of the H2 Design District in respect to building location, scale, roof form, windows, doors, siding, trims, and porches, et cetera. And the design of existing architectural features with respect to proportion and texture shall be retained. And also, conformance to applicable architectural design guidelines for H2 overlay district that we were talking about today. So just to give you some numbers, back last year, the, I signed off on 119 applications, and 30 of them were in-kind applications. And the design guy, I mean, Architectural Review Board, sorry, they looked at 52 applications. Forty-one of them were approved, and six were denied, two were appealed to the city council. Out of the two, one was ARB decision was upheld, the other was denied. And then there were five withdrawal on the application by the applicants. And so in total, 171 was submitted and 160 were approved. So the number that I just presented, two being appealed to the council is a very small number in general. So as Catherine mentioned, based on the City Plan 2040, the review, it states in there that the review and revise architectural design guidelines to improve clarity and respond to new technology and material. Of course, technology changes every day, and we have to comply with that. And for that reason, based on the direction from the city council, the board looked at the options that were provided, either no changes to the current design guidelines, or revise them somehow as it fits the current situation, and just, or repeal it altogether and just do away with the design guidelines. So those were the first basic, I guess, directions. So for that, the Architectural Review Board looked at so many different things to get to the point where we are today. So the first thing is Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation is the first thing that every Architectural Review Board considers. And also, the Historic District Architectural Design Guidelines in other municipalities. We looked at four other municipalities in Virginia and compared our design guidelines with their design guidelines. And also, the experience of the Architectural Design, Architectural Review Board is what was part of the whole process to, to get to a point where we are today. So in the past several years, the Architectural Review Board has had challenges, mainly related to windows and roofs and solar panels, which is under alternative, alternative energy. So based on those, and also comparing our design guidelines with other municipalities, the bottom line were these were the sections that need some tweaking and revising to get to where we need to be today. So as far as the window is concerned, the, the idea is really to, the whole idea really is to ensure that the process is, is done smoother and simplified. So that's really the main, I guess, outcome of this, these things. So, and as far as the window is concerned, the replacement is only based on the deterioration instead of beyond repairs, because the design guidelines currently states that windows may be replaced if they are beyond repair. And that's what the board had kind of struggled with. It's really tough to get to that point. So that process has been simplified. As far as the roof's concerned, replacement of material is being expanded, the, or options provided to the applicants. And others in Dallas Spouts also in, in, you know, additional options have been provided, are provided as part of this revisions. And last but not least, the alternative energy, currently, the design guidelines prohibits or doesn't allow installation of solar panels on front, as long as, as long as they're not visible or highly visible from the street, they're allowed to be there. But the ARB had to review and approve them. So based on the revision, the only applications that are proposed on the front of the building come to the board. The rest could be signed off and reviewed and signed off by staff. So that's going to be the case. And that's really going to help the whole process. So the solar panels may be on the side, the rear roof of the building, or on the detached structure, or within the rear yard. So those could be easily reviewed and approved. So for that, for those processes, obviously, we would like to go to public and present to them the findings of the ARB and get input from them. So the first step was to place the first public meeting that is scheduled for the, for March, March 6th on the city website, and also a civic cent was sent out on February 25th on that. And then, so we are prepared to make a presentation on March 6th. It's going to take place at the Fishburne Mansion. And then we, after that, we're going to go to the neighborhoods and present to them exactly what we're, the finding of the ARB has been on the design revisions, design guideline revisions, and receive input. I know they would have some comments, obviously, and we would definitely want that process to take place. So we go into Gainesboro on March 7th, Mountain View, March 12th, Old Southwest, March 21st, and we're in the process of getting the date set up for Hurt Park, which includes the Patterson Avenue Southwest District. So those are really the main things that I wanted to kind of touch base upon. If there are any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
Well, thank you so much. And you're exactly right on a lot of things, and most of the appeals we get deal with windows and roofs and those kinds of things. So I will open the floor up now for my colleagues. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. One being, how many historic neighborhood districts do we have? I just know of two. I just want to see.
Thank you. You're talking about local districts, correct?
I'm sorry?
We're talking about local historic districts?
Yes.
Okay. We have Old Southwest.
Uh huh.
We have H1 and H2, of course. H1 is mainly downtown, which primarily includes commercial properties, some residential as well. And H2 is primarily residential, but there are also some commercials within it. So the Old Southwest, the Mountain View, Gainesboro, and Patterson Avenue are under H2 Design Districts.
And I noticed where you say you have the neighborhood meetings. Have you reached out to the neighborhood organizations to schedule meetings to meet with them to explain what it is that revisions we're making?
Absolutely. Yes, we have.
Okay, because I spoke with Gainesboro, and they were not aware of it. So I don't know where that dropped.
I spoke with them yesterday.
Okay, well, this was last week, so if you spoke.
Oh, okay.
This was prior to the meeting, and the meeting I met with the group last week, and they did not know, so I'm sure the message got back.
Yes, the only one that's not been established yet is the Hurt Park, but others we have.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr., I'll go here, Ms. Trish Redbourn.
I do, but go ahead. Well, I was going to ask about, you know, when we have these ARB reviews, a lot of times, you know, they're about windows. And I wanted to know if there, if you could go into more detail as to what you guys have done with the windows. Are there any, is there any stipulations that are changing, like, you know, is windows on the side are fine to change, or are there windows that are able to be vinyl? Just kind of wondering what those materials, have there been any changes to materials and things like that that might make it easier for us to discern in the future whether or not we want to approve these?
Yeah. If I can answer that question, and, you know, I may just do Musavi to follow up. Our goal is to essentially, you know, preserve the character-defining windows and essentially the character of the building, and also, if something is replaced, that that material and item be durable, but kind of similar to what was there. So what happens, the thing that's challenging with the windows is you can have certain manufacturers, and I'm an architect by trade, so very familiar with the windows, there's certain manufacturers that have really good functioning, highly functioning windows. And when somebody comes to us or, you know, want to replace their windows, it's not cheap. They're spending a lot of money replacing the windows, and we certainly want to respect their desire and need to replace the window. Nobody's going to want to replace the windows unless they leak or they are highly energy inefficient. So we certainly want to support them replacing the windows. And it's, this is kind of a general overall theme as to the replacement methodology. So we want to, you know, if it's one over one, one big sash on the top and one big sash in the bottom, we want to kind of get them to maintain that. And then if, if the frame is, you know, two inches, two and a half, three inches, we want to kind of maintain that. If it's certain grids in there, we want to maintain that. If it's the eyebrows, we want to maintain that. Sometimes certain manufacturers make that, some manufacturers don't make that. Now, vinyl versus wood becomes a little bit challenging. Generally, vinyl windows don't last as long, they're not as durable. The technology is constantly improving and evolving. Aluminum clad windows generally hold better, you know, they, they kind of clad on top of the wood structure. And we want, anything that's replaced, we want it to last, you know, all of us want it to be a good material that, you know, doesn't start falling apart. And I think that's why the, the guidelines discourage vinyl siding and vinyl windows for the same reason, because they don't have as long a lifespan. Or very thin aluminum cladding on the fascia and soffits and stuff, because that can blow off, that can, you know, fall apart, look unsightly. So we want those buildings to look historic, not necessarily just for the look of it, but also for the durability of it. So what I think the staff is kind of working on, and Mr. Musavi can, can give more detail, is over the years, the board has approved certain types of windows, you know, Good Anderson windows, Pella windows, and different kind of windows. And they're trying to make up essentially a list of those windows that have been approved, and then pass that on to the applicant, say, hey, you know, you want to replace your windows. Here's something that the board's already approved, and maybe you can look into it rather than go through this whole exercise and then waste your time and energy. We want to be stewards for them, but we also want them to do something that's sensible and responsible. With that, I'll pass this on to Mr. Musavi.
Thank you, Sal. In general, I, I would meet with all the applicants on site to ensure that I understand what they're proposing, and they understand what they're expecting, and prepare them for the Architectural Review Board presentation. So in terms of windows, that is really the first thing I look at, whether they are in good condition, are they repairable, and that kind of thing. And also, provide them with options. These are, there are four, five different window products that the board has previously approved. So those are really the options to, to provide to them. And as I understand it, the front of the houses or buildings are critical, and they should be preserved as the best ability of, you know, the property owners. So that's really the first thing. We want to make sure that the front windows are kept intact. And unless there was a fire or something that the windows disappeared, they're not there, then there's not much you can do about that. And also, as I understand it, the revisions would allow revision, you know, replacement of the windows on the side and the rear. So that's really the answer to your question. And also, as part of this effort by the Architectural Review Board, there is a list of products that we are putting together to provide to the applicants in terms of windows, roofs, and other materials to, excuse me, ensure that they are following the, the right procedures.
Thank you. Do you want to say something, Mr. Mason?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Look, the piece I would add is that...
Sorry, would you pass that along, please?
The effort to clarify, streamline, you know, is overriding all of this. And so what's going on is that we are trying to give staff, in this case, Mr. Musavi, more places where he can approve. And so, instead of saying you, a window has to be beyond repair, which takes a lot of interpretation, what's that mean? We've, we've said, hey, if the window is badly deteriorated, it's okay to replace it. And, and made it clear that if, if the windows are on the back or the sides, that he can replace, you know, if people request, and they're using an appropriate window, which is similar to the list of... is similar to the list of windows we give, and it doesn't have to be that exact model, but similar, right, in size and shape, the way Mr. Lam explained, then, then Mr. Musavi can approve that, and they can move on with their project. If they're on the front or on the, a street-facing side, they would have to come to us. So that's the, so if they're, they're insisting, hey, I do want to replace these windows that are on the front and the side, okay, well, that's, that's fine, make your application and come to the board and let's talk through it. And, and so, trying to make it a little smoother, a little quicker, more, and consistent.
And if I may add to it, you know, as compared to the process that we had five years ago or 10 years ago, and, you know, some of us, especially the, the architect board members, we have come in front of the board over the years and presented our projects and, you know, buildings in downtown, and it, and the process used to be, hey, we can't, we can't replace any windows unless they're beyond repair, which really put a high burden of responsibility on the owner of the building, saying, hey, man, this is really expensive, you know, nobody can see those buildings on the back and sides, and still a lot of work. So we want to make that process simple, but at the end of the day, we do want to preserve history, and we do want to preserve our historic fabric. That is the task that's on our shoulder, and we, we take that seriously. We don't want to lose our, the history of the city of Roanoke, because all of us want to preserve it. So there's a fine balance between it, you know, but we, with the same token, if somebody wants to come in and say, hey, you know, I want to put vinyl windows in front of the building, we'll sit down and talk to them. I mean, we will, we will hear that application, doesn't mean we will approve it or disapprove it, you know, and if there is merit to that application, we'll certainly consider that, and we want to know why they want to do that, and, you know, I think, but if it's in the back and these are windows that are approved, and Mr. Musavi has kind of already worked up that list, you know, with this change, he can make that process faster for the applicant's sake. Okay, back of the building, side of the building, which is not visible, you can make that change, you don't have to go in front of the board. So that's really, in essence, the change with this amendment.
Makes it more administrative if it's on the side and back, and then comes to, comes to y'all if it's on the front.
And, and, you know, as Mr. Musavi mentioned, he's already approved like 120-some application without board review. So only 50-some applications have come to the board, so it's a smaller number, and we, you know, we hope that that number becomes even smaller. We want to be as process-friendly to the applicants, but we want to hold them to a higher standard. And, you know, I think one of the things that we'll probably, some of the board members are going to want to discuss through the process and at the end of the process is, is when somebody comes in and just categorically take the windows out and throw them away, what are the teeth that the board, that our board has, and the city council has put to people that have demolished their buildings, that have taken the windows out, very relevant historic fabric of the city, and basically thrown them in the trash or gotten rid of it, say, oh, we sorry, you know, we'll just pay the double, double fine and, or double fee, and then apply for another permit. And that happens as well. So there are people who are really going through this process, working very hard to get in-kind metal roofing and expensive windows, and spending 30, $40, $50,000 replacing these windows or repairing them, and there are other people who are totally ignoring it and just coming in and putting vinyl windows. So we need to be, you know, good stewards and say, hey, you know, this is the standard, and you guys have to uphold that standard. And, you know, Mr. Dixon may come back in a, in a little bit and, and mention that, that, you know, there's some applicants that come in with extremely well-laid-out process and plans and details on what they are presenting to us, and the other people say, hey, you know, I'm just going to replace the windows, you guys want to approve it. Oh, what, what are you replacing? You know, what is the profile? What do they look like? How are you replacing character-defining windows? What is the cornice detail? What is the gutter detail? So there's a lot that goes into it, and we want to make the process very friendly to them, but we also want them to repair these buildings in a respectful manner.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that, because, you know, that's probably the number-one issue we, we deal with. I also had just, I had two other things, I'm sorry, Ms. Whiteboy. The other one is about hidden gutters. Those are very, can be very expensive. I grew up in a house with hidden gutters. They tend to leak and have to be fixed very often, and those leaks can lead to soffit repairs and other things, and other degradation of the outside of the house. So I was wondering, you know, why there hasn't been any change in, in hidden gutters? Like, could a, a building technically put on the half rounds or something that's historically accurate and deck over those hidden gutters to hopefully reduce their maintenance costs and stuff like that in the future, and, you know, make it more cost-effective for folks to fix their roofs or, you know, put in those gutters that are going to be cheaper than doing that?
You're welcome to. He seems eager to take.
So we, we bought our house in 2003 and lined the gutters with, with EPDM or rubber black material, and they've not leaked for over 20 years. You can line them with metal, and they don't leak. We have very few applicants requesting to roof over the hidden gutter. So it, it may be that during our public input that that comes up more, and maybe we should consider it, but there, there are really good alternatives and ways to repair the gutters, and they're, they are character-defining, because, you know, you have a slope of the roof, and then it comes down, and it's almost that pagoda shape, and, and it comes down and turns, and that's, that's very, you know, that's a very appealing feature of older homes, and, and so, but if, if not maintained, they, they can be a real problem, and...
Do you want to mention the, kind of the cost on your repairs or something like that? It's not cost prohibitive.
Oh, gosh, you know, I don't, that was 20 years ago, so, but, you know, you have to get some, and, you know, it's, you do have to ask the right questions and, and talk to people about how they're doing it, because, you know, not all roofers know how to use rubber, not all of them know how to form up metal, you know. If the thing they're good at is hammering shingles on, then they're the wrong person to try, you know, they want to put shingles over your hidden gutter and then slap, you know, traditional gutters on there. But it just, it hasn't come up very much.
Okay. Yeah, in, in the last several years that, you know, we've been on the board, we haven't seen anyone really ask for removal of it. Now, one of the other things, as some of our architect members would probably like to comment on it, and I'll maybe get Mr. Dixon to comment on that, is, you know, there's, there's a certain architectural feature that goes with the hidden gutters, there's this cornice that's created, sometimes dental blocks underneath it, and there's a freeze board. So when you remove the hidden gutter, you essentially destroy the whole fabric of it. It's not like, hey, I can just take that off and put a half round or an OG gutter. There's like this whole detail that was built 100 years ago. Now, if, you know, there's a house where it's all falling apart, all that detail is totally compromised, and, you know, a simple way to preserve it is just put OG-shaped gutter, which really matches the old geometry of the cornice or, you know, cornice that was beyond the hidden gutter. So what they did is, they kind of put the hidden gutter and faced it with like a crown molding, a little wooden detail with a cornice and all of that stuff. So the OG gutters tried to mimic that, but not to the same level. Now, if a building is burned and it's, you know, beyond repair, I think the board would be certainly very open to it, but if that, all that cornice and freeze and dental is in really good condition, and, and you're going to spend, you know, $3,000, $4,000 repairing the existing gutters, it's much more relevant to do that than to put a whole new set of gutters, which costs you $10,000, $12,000, $15,000, plus the cost of trying to rebuild some of that cornice. So we certainly are very attentive to, to the cost, but we don't want to use cost as a, as a reason to destroy our history.
Cool. Thank you for that. And...
Mr. Mason, Mr. Dixon, do you want to add any to it?
Well, the technology is there to do a hidden, a hidden gutter properly, but the cost is extensive, and there are extenuating circumstances to the other features that enclose the hidden concealed gutter, and it's a complicated situation. Much easier to just nail on a few gutters and going down the road.
Yeah.
But then, but then we're getting into the issue of trying to balance what, we'd like to be able to tell folks with hidden gutters, you've got to, you've got to replace, or maintain them.
Yeah.
Fix them, but then there's a cost issue.
And the last thing I just wanted to bring up with the alternative energy, I just wanted to make sure we're looking at new technologies such as solar shingles that are now out. So just wanted to put that in your, your guys' mind as you're going through this, how those might be.
We approved one.
Yeah, we have approved a few solar shingle applications, and, you know, we've kind of, again, encouraged them to put them on the back and sides wherever they can, and if it's visible, then it's got to come to the board. So with this amendment, anything that's visible on solar panels from the main street and visible streets, it has to come to the board. Now, if they're putting a solar panel on the back of the building or any accessory structures, staff can approve it. However, there is a little caveat in there, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Musavi, that if it's something that is mounted that can be removed, then the staff can approve it, you know, on the back and sides where it's not visible. But if it's something that's integrated with it, which means once you remove it, there'll be shingles missing or metal roof missing or something like that, then it's got to come in front of the board. So sometimes a solar panel that are shingle format, you essentially have to remove a certain section of the roof, put those in, and then again, you know, we certainly, as a board, we certainly very open to that, we just want to make sure they're not removing very good order slate or a metal roof that's in very good order, and then they're going to come in and take, you know, 60% of it off, off a south-facing side, where, you know, maybe there, there could be another way to put a different type of solar panel. So some of those details that are up there that are 100 years old, you know, if they're gone and beyond repair, yes, but if they're in good order, there's no reason to just go and weave a whole new metal solar panel shingle.
Yeah.
For me, the biggest challenge on this board in great time that I have served has been how you balance technological advancements against preservation, because they're not necessarily compatible.
Yeah.
And now, how do I, as an architect, I can specify a highly advanced technological window for a client of mine who has a facility outside of the historical district, but come to the inside of the historical, historical, excuse me, historical district. If I'm following the guide, then I am somewhat required, to the extent that I've decided to go along with it, I'm required to deny applicants who may want a superior technological product but does not follow the preservation guidelines that we are administering.
Gotcha.
Technology, technology versus preservation. And once the camel gets a nose under the tent, how can you approve a technological advancement in one area and then have an applicant, applicant come along and seek to advance technology in another area and deny that? There's a, there's a balance there, and I have trouble with that, that's, that's just me.
And to, to add to that point, or just to clarify, we are trying to follow what we as a state are doing, state of Virginia. So there are many, many historic districts all across the state, and we're all familiar with, you know, especially Ms. Crono up here and, and some of the other board members that deal with the DHR state, kind of, the state arm of Historic Preservation Department Historic Resources, and what they're doing, what they're recommending, and, you know, trying to follow their guidelines, and what is Richmond doing, you know, what is Lynchburg doing, certainly are not trying to make Roanoke be the, be, become Williamsburg, you know. We can't put that burden on, on Patterson Avenue property owners, because that may be too heavy a burden to create, to make it like Williamsburg, and again, even not Richmond, not even Monument Avenue in Richmond. But, you know, we have looked at cities and towns that are very similar to our size, and, and what kind of guidelines they have, and trying to make our guidelines, especially with these revisions and amendments, very compatible with that. Is there, Mr. Musavi, if you want to add to, to, to some of the areas that we looked at, Ms. Gray, you want to mention to that?
I certainly concur with what Mr. Adam mentioned, so I don't have nothing to add at this point. And Ms. Catherine wants to mention as well.
Thank you. Thank you for all those answers. It's very helpful for ring.
All right, Ms. Whiteboy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I, I just want to say thank you for, for all that, that you do. We certainly appreciate it, and we've only had, like you said, a couple that came before us, but you would not believe the struggle that we have up here on this side, you know, with, with just those two, like, do we uphold it? Or, I tend to, to lean on your expertise, and I tend to uphold your decisions, because I don't know a quarter round from the half round and the OG from the other G. So it's important for me to let you all do your, your job, and I can tell that you've taken some time to do that and made a lot of concessions, but we have to remember the impetus for this board, and, and our mission, right, is to preserve those districts, and I think that's important, that we remember that when, when we're trying to make the decisions up here. But, but my question is, is mostly about a disconnect, because we've had folks come up and say, well, I had no idea. And so when, when they purchase a home, do, do they know that they're in a historic district? Because certainly they, they've been made aware of some maybe historical tax credits and things like that, but, but you'd be surprised at the homeowners that, once they get here and get in that predicament after they've torn out the windows and thrown them away or whatever, say that they did not realize that they couldn't do that. So I heard workshops, how would an owner, if you moved here from Chicago and you bought a house in Old Southwest? I know Mr. Bestpit used to be on, on council, and he lived in Old Southwest, and he was really good about educating us and helping us to understand, you know, the purpose, but how does a resident or a homeowner know that they have purchased a home in a historic district?
That's a very good question.
We wrestle with that, too.
So you're kind of hoping a little bit of what the city does, or a good bit of what, what, you know, your, your different boards do to inform the residents.
Yeah, I just want to know if there's a disconnect somehow, so we can make sure we fix that.
In terms of the Old Southwest, as you know, they have very strong neighborhood organization, and they will reach out, as far as they are concerned, they would reach out to all the new owners and try to limit those issues that may occur in terms of not being able to, or knowing about the, the design guidelines. And of course, I personally myself attend neighborhood meetings and try to make sure that they are aware, but not everybody attend those meetings, and that's a possibility of not getting those.
So, okay, because I still really didn't answer my question, is there, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm looking at the city manager now, because you're...
Yeah, I mean, I always put this somewhat in the same category as there is zoning on all of our property, there are requirements for building permits on all of our property, and so similarly, the owner of property, to some degree, it's incumbent upon them to, to learn what the applicable rules are associated with those. So, for example, we hear regularly someone will put a, an addition on a building, or they'll put a deck on the, and often we'll say, well, I didn't know I had to have a building permit. Those are, we don't notify people of all of the ordinances, all the regulations that apply to a piece of property, to some degree, that it's, it's their responsibility to know what those requirements are, be they zoning, the historic preservation guidelines, or these others. Now, we do try to make the information available through their neighborhood associations, if there is an active one, and those others, but we don't do necessarily anything, and I don't know what you would do, that would go beyond what is required of them for all of the other rules and regulations that apply to their property.
Well, I, I'm, I'm thinking specifically in the historic areas. So if I were to move here from Chicago, I don't know anything about your historic district, and I have a house, it's my house, and I don't like these old windows, I take them out, and then you guys say, that was a no-no, you know, slap on the wrist.
Well, there's two types, it seems to be two types of homeowners that we deal with. Those who come into the district with the desire to preserve, upgrade their facility, and make it a showplace for Old Southwest. And then there are those who, some of the properties are economically very available in the area, and those who purchase these don't really have a lot of means economically to go in and make the substantial... and make the substantial upgrades that we would like to see. So it's kind of a dilemma, it becomes an extenuating circumstance, which you have to deal with.
This is true, and that's why we're trying to get to the bottom of it. And I am still not hearing, how would a homeowner know that they have purchased in, I think Mr. Mason is...
Yeah, I think the city attorney might be able to address this. Is this a required disclosure for realtors under the Virginia law to provide?
Yes, that's my understanding.
So is that what you were going to say, Mr. Mason, that, because I'm wondering if the realtors are doing that?
The short answer is, we don't do that.
Okay.
The staff would like to mention, though, that all of our street signs do have a historic district designation in our local historic districts.
Yes, I'm just trying to figure out where the disconnect is. I mean, if you're moving here from someplace else, you don't know the history of Roanoke, you don't understand our historic districts, and you purchase a home, I think that we need to figure out a way, because we want to eliminate that. Like you say, you want fewer coming, we want to uphold the standards as well.
I think we can do better, to Mr. Mason's point.
We as, the city, or all of us?
City, all of us. And, you know, we have some suggestions over the years, we have deliberated a lot of this, we have people coming in from all walks of life and saying, "Hey, I didn't know that."
Sure.
And some of them, they really didn't know that, and some of them, they knew it, but they didn't want to follow.
But they didn't want to follow, exactly.
And they just want to play ignorant.
Exactly.
So there's a whole lot of that going on. You know, Mr. Musavi has mentioned over the years, you know, there are tax sales, and as soon as those tax sales happen, you know, can those people be notified in a right way? Because somebody from Chicago buys this property up here, and the first thing they want to do is fix a leaky roof and leaky windows, and boom, all the history's gone. And then they don't even have a, basically, ever contact a realtor, because it's not going through the whole real estate process. So, you know, there's all these little loopholes that you mentioned, people go through and fall through, and their developers that come in and they want to develop it, rent those things, to make money, and they really don't care how quickly they get it done, and find any loopholes to work through. So there needs to be a better way to inform. Now, you know, I think there's all different bodies up here that can really come up with a better strategic process to make that happen. And we have tried to do it on our end, encourage our staff to be as diligent and, you know, informed through the neighborhood meetings and stuff like that, but we don't think it's enough. I mean, as our board, we don't have enough teeth in our, and enough tools in our toolbox to make that happen. You all have much better tools. When a tax auction happens, you know, is there a memo that goes out to them?
Right.
You know, that says, "Hey, by the way, this is a historic property, and you have to follow these guidelines." We don't do that.
Well, I think we need to talk a little bit more about that, and we'll do that offline. I think maybe that's something we need to work on, on our end, because I think we need to make sure that people are notified, because then you can't, you know, there's that ambiguity there, and you don't want, like you said, that, do they know? Do they really know? Or do they say, "Oh, I didn't know that," because they don't want to spend $15,000 to, you know, repair the windows. So I think we just need to do a little bit more on our end to make sure that when homeowners buy those properties in those historic districts, that they are notified, whether it's through the city, or the realtors, or whatever. But, Mr. Callis, is there something we can do to work on that, or try to figure out a process that's streamlined?
Yes, I guess my, and, you know, I would probably ultimately look to Tim, I think, you know, one of the things you want to do is, you don't want to codify something that says, "We are obligated to inform folks every time X, Y, or Z happens," because we don't always know when those properties change hands. Sometimes it's through a tax sale.
Tax sale, like you said.
Sometimes it's a relative that sells it to somebody, and you don't know. Sometimes it's through a realtor. But there are also ways you could do it. I'm thinking, for example, every one of our households receives, you know, once a year the information relative to leaf and trash information, maybe you place it on that. That would get to the homeowner, but maybe not to somebody that buys. There's probably a couple of different ways you can do it. You know, again, I mean, we actually had a tax sale here recently, someone purchased the property, property's in the floodplain, they can't actually do what they wanted to do with it in the floodplain, and it's kind of, you know, another one of those where it's like, there's a layer, there are a layer upon layer of regulations that apply to our properties, some of which are driven locally, some of which are driven by the state. So, yeah, I think there's things that we can do, I just would not say that they're ever going to be foolproof.
No, absolutely. We got to start somewhere, though, because I think that's what happens oftentimes when they come. But the only other thing I wanted to ask about were the incentives, how are they being notified about incentives to preserve homes in historic districts?
Yeah, and it's really kind of the same thing.
Yeah, those are the two things that I had, it's like, how people, how do they know?
Yeah, I think as people, you know, either through word of mouth, or through the hair, through a neighborhood association, or they see it kind of through the commissioner's office on the website. But similarly, yeah, there's not a intentional effort to inform folks in those historic districts, both of the local incentives, as well as state and potentially national incentives that are attached to tax credits with those.
Well, I was just thinking, yeah, go ahead, Bill.
We had a camp back last summer, a nationally recognized organization that trains boards came to Roanoke, and we went to a class all day. One of the biggest things that came out, in my mind, from that was lack of marketing. We don't put the word out about what we do. People misunderstand, and so I think it's a critical component for us, because we're going to have to tell somebody no someday, right? I mean, that's going to happen, you're going to be in that position to tell somebody no, and you need to feel pretty darn good about the fact that, hey, we did our best to let you know. And so what you did crossed the line, and we're going to say no. You know, my idea is to invite people to our board meetings. I mean, we have public board meetings, and very rarely do we get anybody come. So do we advertise that and encourage people to start coming to the board meetings, and then they learn what we're doing, and maybe dispel some lack of awareness and that sort of thing, but I...
Well, thank you, because I do say that, I do. I try to uphold all of, most of the decisions, because I think you've done your due diligence, and you understand it. I guess we can talk more about it, and I'll talk with Mr. ...
Well, you've heard that these districts have homeowners groups within them that promote preservation and proper behavior, I eat the guidelines. So this is an avenue, I think, that we probably need to be more of, and I think I know from my own personal experience, I've volunteered to go before these groups, and they have meetings periodically, maybe monthly, I don't know. But if you get to the people who really care about the district, they can do a lot from within.
Yeah, and I won't spend much more time on it, I just think it's important that we realize that we do have somewhat of a disconnect, and maybe that would help in some of the problems that we're having. And thanks again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let me, you still have the floor, I want to ask Ms. Sanchez-Jones if she has some, you want to add some information regarding notification and what we're talking about, Nick?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Councilwoman Whiteboy said. I had a family that purchased a home on Patterson, and the realtor did not disclose that it was in the historical section of town. So therefore, they tried to do some improvements, and they didn't know anything about, you know, that they had to be done in a certain way, in accordance to the Architectural Review Board. So that is an issue. People buy properties thinking, "Okay, it's inexpensive property, I'm going to fix it up." And they're people that love to, you know, they're into trade jobs, so they, "I could do this myself, I don't need a, you know, I don't need anybody to tell me what to do," because they don't know that they need, there is a process for a permit to be working on a home, so.
If I may add to that, and I think taking historic preservation seriously is important, and, you know, we are all here because we're taking it seriously, but there are a lot of people who don't take it seriously. There are a lot of roofers, repair people, contractors, owners that don't take this seriously. And I think the burden goes back to the city council to make sure that everybody involved in this process knows that this is serious, this is a relevant and important issue. And reaching out to the, you know, Roanoke Regional Realtor Association with a memo from the mayor and council would do wonders to that process. Reaching out to the Home Builder Association would do wonders, you know, reaching out to the Associated General Contractor Association would do wonders. So a format letter out to four to five of these important organizations that essentially channel a lot of this communication, then nobody's coming to us saying, "Oh, my realtor didn't tell me." Well, you know, mayor, council sent a letter to the regional association of realtors, and then the burden is up to them to pass it on to all their thousands of realtor members to make sure they do the process, you know?
Probably a boot at the home show might be a way to check, because most of us who are contemplating improving their property do show up in March or April, whenever they have that. And we could explain to them that.
That's a really good answer.
All right, we're coming down now, I'm going to go ahead and finish, and we'll move down the line.
Okay. Mr. Musavi, how often does your department go out and inspect the neighborhoods, the historic neighborhoods, to see if someone is doing something that they're doing, they're working on a home without a permit? How often does that happen?
Thanks for your question. We work closely with the code compliance division of the planning department, so they're really our eyes on the street. And I work closely with the person that is in charge of the neighborhoods that fall under the H2 and H1 historic district. So those are really the main way of figuring out, or finding out about it. And of course, we get, you know, tips from neighbors, I get calls or emails that things are happening, or do they have COA? Do they have the right, you know, approval to do whatever they're doing? And I, as quick as I can get, I'll get out there, because I live in the neighborhood, and I can sometimes walk over and ensure that they're aware, if they're not, and take them through the procedure.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Ms. Pretty.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. We'll try to be brief. First, thank you all for coming here today. I know every time we have an appeal, we talk about seeing when the guidelines are going to be updated, and that predated my time on council, and it's even led to where we are now. And it's my hope that even once these amendments are reviewed today, that this is something that we'll continue to do on, not an annual basis, but maybe every five or 10 years or so, as we see what are the things that we need to consider going forward. Because ultimately, thinking as Councilwoman Whiteboy spoke to earlier, we want to support what your process is, and we want to make sure that we're not overturning what those things are. But what helps us is making sure that the number of decisions that are coming in front of you all don't ultimately get elevated to council, so that we're addressing the everyday concerns. I think the things that we deal with the most, or that we hear with, from the people in our neighborhoods, are based on cost of the materials, that are based on energy efficiency, and ultimately, what will allow them to, in a cost-efficient way, maintain their home, but do so in a way that maintains the appearance that you are helping, hoping to uphold. So first, thank you all for all of that. I have two questions. One's really for the board, one maybe more so for the city attorney. The first is related to our zoning changes. I know that we're looking at a number of things that will allow for more accessory dwelling units. There are some concerns, let's say fears, raised by residents about raising of replacing homes in order to make sure that zoning may allow for more things to be done. Could you talk about just the process briefly, about what protections we have for raising of homes in our districts? And then I'll save my question for the city attorney in a moment.
You talking about raising means like demolishing and completely tearing them down? You know, I think that's a very, very important question that we have discussed, and a lot of times, when something like that comes to us, they have demolished accessory structure, or something is demolished, really, there is essentially minimal or no penalty to do something like that. So, and that's, I kind of lightly touched on that before, the people who go to this whole extensive process, effort, time, and energy to preserve a structure, and then somebody else just demolishes it, and they just get a little slap on the wrist. So we really, the city council, and the zoning, and planning, and all of these departments need to put some teeth into that process, that there is some serious penalty to do, you know, and unlike, like, let's say, given an example, a comparative example, somebody goes in and builds a staircase, or a little deck extension to their existing house, and it doesn't meet the zoning requirements or the building code requirements. Inspector would go in, and they would tell them, "Hey, how you can fix it, maybe make the railing a little taller, the steps meet the code, so we protect the safety and welfare of those residents." In this case, when they go and raise a building down, or demolish the windows, or tear down a certain section of it, there is no way to preserve it. It's gone. I mean, that 100-year-old fabric is gone. And what do they have to do? Pay double permit fees to walk away with that? So why would everybody not do that? Why would somebody not take a bulldozer on a Saturday, demo the whole building down, and all they get is a little slap on the wrist? There is, there is no fine, essentially, you know? So from our side, it breaks our heart, because we spent so much effort trying to preserve this window trim, and then somebody else just goes and demolishes the whole building down. So, Mr. Pretty, you know, we have no process to really prevent that, or we have no process to really understand why we allow that to happen.
Just one quick clarification, I think you said twice permit fees, but I think our code is twice the fair assessed value is, I believe, what we have currently in our charter as a protection for raising. Is that correct? As long as we adopt an ordinance. There's a bill in the General Assembly now that seeks to extend that authority to all localities, but it's only at the fair market value. We would still keep our protection at twice, since our charter, I believe, is more permissive.
What they put back.
Well, and that'll be my follow-up question, but I'd like Mr. Mason to go ahead and address that first.
Thank you, Mr. Pretty. Understanding that we, there are some good reasons for infill, right, and strategically, and that sort of thing, but I think our board really is protection against that sort of thing, because they, you know, in order to raise a building in this area, you've got to come to us, unless you do just outright break the law. And so we're going to put them through their paces as to why would you have to do that, right? And, you know, you've got to consider, you know, all these different things that are very specifically spelled out. And so I think it's helpful in preventing the very thing that you're talking about, in that the H2 and the H1 districts are somewhat protected from that kind of malicious behavior by some developer.
Thank you. My follow-up question is also based on the zoning changes that we'll see later in the year, or hopefully in two weeks, probably. So it proposes a number of kinds of structures that we currently, at least, don't have as defined in our code. And in our architectural historic districts, things like cottage courts are things that we really currently have. So what role will the ARB play in approving new kinds of structures that aren't currently possibly visible in our historic areas, in a way that allow for some flexibility with these zoning changes that we're looking for, while still seeking to preserve part of history, but putting something new that's never really technically been there? And also giving flexibility for people to make the modifications necessary to upgrade their homes in ways to be used in more ways, while still maintaining the visibility and durability of this historic preservation?
Very good question, and I think as a community, and as a board, and even as architects, we all want to see growth, and we all want to see adaptation with new usage of space. And we actually, you know, there's a whole process in the guideline that allows new structures to be built, on empty lots, on lots that have space in the back. So there is no discouragement from our side to not engage in that process. We actually would like the community to engage in that process, and look for ways to add more to, you know, to put additions, to add additional structures on it. So there is, you know, the question becomes, you know, how do you balance it? How do you balance the historic fabric, and then add more sustainability, add more functionality, you know, an accessory structure that could be leased out, and they can make $1,200, $1,500 a month as owners of that property? What can we do to help them reach their goals? And I think we are all definitely open to that, as long as they come to the board, go through the due process, work with Mr. Musavi, and, you know, he'll definitely guide them, saying, "Hey, here's the process to go through it." And I think the more encouraging we are to the community, saying, "Hey, you know, we want you..." want you to, we want to help you reach your goals, go through the process, rather than saying, hey, we'll come do this thing, tear it down, and then we'll ask for forgiveness, you know? And that, you know, if you can encourage them in the other process, it's going to be beneficial for all parties involved.
Thank you.
I'm not in the majority on this board, but I feel that any new construction in a historic district or complex district needs to have professional involvement. And I've been told that's not possible, and I haven't been given a good reason why. But I think if we're really concerned about what happens when reproduction or any complex alteration takes place, I think that we require on certain building permits, but yet when we make an application, we don't require for certain complicated and new construction, we don't require professional involvement. I think that's a mistake. I'm in the minority, I understand, but that's my feeling.
Thank you to the board. The point that I wanted to make across that, I know we haven't done our zoning changes yet, is that while some things at least appear in what's being proposed as to be permitted by right, is that there are still other protections and processes with which people have to go through, and potentially new appeals that we may be addressing up here as people try to utilize those opportunities that yet haven't been to fruition. My follow-up question is more for the city attorney and possibly the city manager, knowing the process that we're going through. You all are going to have some public meetings, and thank you all for doing that. I know not everyone's available at the time of day that these meetings occur, but that these public outreach opportunities will be helpful. They will develop more finalized guidelines, and then we will approve that on behalf of council, expecting the form of a resolution. Knowing that this is a resolution and we're having this conversation now so that you can get our input, this isn't like an ordinance where we can amend what they're proposing to us as it comes through. Am I correct? We're really either affirming or not affirming the guidelines as they're proposing them. And it's more formality, because we're not really required to. This is just something that's being given us.
We'll give a yes and no answer, and I'll look at it again. Of course, being a resolution, council could make its recommendations to any amendments that it wishes to occur within the guidelines, having heard this, having received additional input from staff that they've received from public hearings and meetings. And you could do that. But likewise, typically, all zoning is done by ordinance, but this is not quite zoning. So what I also want to have the opportunity to do is make sure I look back in our history on what we've done in the past. My memory is, is that it's been adopted by resolution, and therefore you could have more give and take, and it would not require the public hearing necessary. But I would like the opportunity to go back and review process that we've used in the past. Not that we're always going to be handcuffed by the past, but I suspect that when I look, I'll find that even though one is not legally required, that we very often may have advertised a public hearing just to check, to be more transparent, because that tends to be what we do.
Mr. Sprese, we didn't take any action, though, before we heard back from the ARB, and for them to go through the process, they just outlined.
Exactly. They're going to go back through that.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, we're going to do that process for.
No, no, exactly.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. My closing remark will be, and thank you for this public input that you're seeking. I hope that they will get involved, and I hope that you all seek as much permissiveness as you can while seeking as much protection as you can, so that ultimately we receive less appeals going forward. Thank you.
All right. Final comment from council, and I'm going to go to the vice mayor, because we were going a little bit over the time I had, and I don't want to keep you all here. We're going to be here for a while. So I'm going to end with the vice mayor making his comments.
Well, as someone who lives in Old Southwest and has most of my life in Roanoke, I really appreciate the work that you all have done. I know you've been leaning toward doing this for some time, and it's very apparent, the amount of time and research you've given to this, and areas where you see room for improvement. A couple of things I just wanted to highlight and express my gratitude for, related to windows and doors, and also replacement and substitute materials. It seems to me you have a really comprehensive list of recommendations here. And I know some of that already existed. Could you elaborate just a little bit on why you feel this is important? Some of this has to do with how to best maintain windows and doors and roof and guttering, but some of it also has to do with some of these questions that have come to us about cost effectiveness and thermal efficiency. Could you just elaborate briefly on why you've expanded, what you've included in the guidelines, and how, why you believe that's important in terms of preservation?
What I'll do is, Mr. Mason and I will kind of give you an overview, and then we can have the staff talk a little bit more detail if you need to. You know, I think each area is a little bit different, but, and I'll kind of give you just some basic highlights of it. If you take, for example, on roofing, you know, we get a lot of roofing applications that are standing seam metal roof, and they want to replace a bit, you know, more modern standing seam metal roof, which is not hand-cremped and put together. So in the past, it used to be like, hey, it's got to be exactly in kind. So with the new modification, we've said, hey, we can do the manufactured metal roof as long as they look similar in the certain guidelines and details that are defined in the amendments, but we're okay with that. Now, if you have metal shingles that were there on existing roofs, and we can replace them with higher-quality architectural shingles, fiberglass asphalt shingles, because the existing roof was shingles. You know, so we've kind of made some of those amendments up there that the staff can just do it, approve it, and be done with it. But now when it comes down to, hey, you know, we have metal shingles up there, sorry, standing seam metal roof, and we want to replace it with architectural asphalt shingles, it has to be brought in front of the board, and the board will look at it, and the cost plays into it, and we certainly, you know, attentive to that, but it becomes a balance of preservation versus cost. Do you want to talk about maybe the windows do that effect on?
Well, I might stick with roofs for a minute.
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
So, similar to windows, we require currently, someone has to prove to us they need to replace their roof. Come in, show us pictures of the inside, show us receipts of where you had it repaired in the past, so on. We don't think people are trying to spend $20,000, $30,000 on replacing their roof unless they're pretty sure they need to replace their roof. So we want to remove that burden and say, hey, if you want to come and apply to replace your roof, then, okay. And then by putting more materials and, say, for instance, saying that you can put shingles where you used to have a pressed metal roof, which has somewhat similar look. If we put that in the guidelines, then it puts Mr. Musavi or staff in position of being able to approve that roof without the owner coming to us. And so you don't have to, it's not such a burden to prove that you need to replace your roof, and in many more cases, you can replace your roof because we spelled out these products, not a brand or anything like that, but just the type of product. And similar to the windows, we will have a list online, I think they're going to have that this summer, so that, you know, people can look and say, oh, okay, if I use that kind of shingle, I can probably get, and I mean, meet Mr. Musavi, and then it gets approved, and they can move on with it. So that, does that answer?
And I think gutters are the same way, you know? In the past, we've had, you know, every time they're changing the shape of the gutter, they're coming to the board. So we've put in there, for example, on the gutter, saying, hey, you know, half-round and OG gutters with round downspouts, they don't even have to come, the staff can approve it. So, you know, if it's an older gutter, they're trying to replace it with, and they want to put an OG gutter there. It's a standard administrative approval, so it saves them time and process and due process, and, you know, they... So we want to preserve the buildings, we don't want leaky roofs, we don't want leaky windows, we don't want gutters that don't work, and we want to make the process as simple as possible, but at the same time, we don't want them to come and put a commercial rectangular gutter on a beautiful historic building. So some of those things are kind of cleaned up in the process, and you'll see them in your handouts with kind of the blue highlighted sections that we have kind of gone through it and made that. On the same token, you know, we had, the last board meeting we had was one applicant coming and saying, hey, you know, I want to take the metal roof and replace it with architectural asphalt shingles. You know, why are you doing that? Because it's cheaper. How much cheaper? You know, well, it's, one is, and I, you know, I don't hold me to it, the numbers, but, you know, one is 20, the other one is maybe 25. So I think, you know, at that point, it becomes a question of, you know, is dollars and cents the reason to compromise history and our fabric or not? You know, now, if it was 20 to $60,000 or something like that, you know, maybe cost could play something. So we try not to look at the cost as much, but we are very sensitive to the cost. If I can, if I can, you know, say it in a simple manner. We feel their pain, but we don't want them to just trash our history.
Yeah. Thank you for that. We talked a little bit about new builds in historic districts. For four years, I owned a home on Day Avenue, and there was a property next door that barely if ever met code compliance, and all of us could see that the bones were incredible. Well, now they are. Someone who cared about that property restored it. In terms of blighted properties in historic districts, do you all feel like you have what you need to hold property owners accountable? And I know it's not just you all, but in terms of these things that we're seeing that really reduce value in historic areas, where you have dilapidated properties that are not cared for? I guess I'm asking, do you have what you need to support the city in trying to correct those properties and hold those property owners accountable so that we're reducing blight and restoring some of that architectural integrity to those properties?
That's a good, very good question.
It's not our purview.
No.
You know, that's zoning, right?
Right.
So it doesn't come to us at all. We don't have any...
We do get applications where somebody's saying, hey, you know, this property is, you know, it's got this tax assessed value or real value, or whatever you want to call it, and, you know, how do you expect us to put this expensive windows? How do you expect us to put this expensive a roof out there, you know? And I think city has some incentives for people, enterprise zone and, you know, tax dreaded incentives and those kind of things to help them. You know, can the city do more to help those blighted properties? I think so, and I think we should. I'm not sure what that due process is, and that might be the city manager and the city attorney and, you know, Catherine's, you know, administrative staff need to come up with a plan to help them, because we have some sections of the city that have amazing historic fabric, and it's falling apart, and they don't have the money and resources to fix it. New people are not coming in those areas to buy those properties because, you know, they just don't have the market value, they don't have the tax assessed value, and they are not going to invest. And if they want to invest, they want to put in the vinyl windows, and, you know, it doesn't happen in Old Southwest, but it happens on those properties that you mentioned.
Well, and I think some of that, maybe we've seen more in areas like Patterson Avenue, where the houses have really dilapidated, and somebody's coming in to try and restore those. So, and I realize that's not completely in your purview, but I think it's a question we need to keep in front of us.
And we had one of the board members, I think our chairman, you know, made a discussion at the last planning meeting, saying, hey, you know, can we have a different standard for sections like that? You know, can we have? And then that becomes a question of equity, and are we given different standards to different areas? And, you know, again, that's, you get into those legal sections that we certainly don't have the ability, and it's above our pay grade to really understand or ability to understand how that would affect legally and politically. But really, I mean, we need to encourage preservation on Patterson and some of those streets where there's not a lot of preservation going on.
My last question is hopefully brief. Outside of what you've presented as the revisions, are there any other revisions under consideration? Or does this cover everything with the windows, doors, roofs?
That's a good question.
Energy?
No, I think, you know, it's the roofing and the windows, a little bit of tweaks, you know, on gutter, adding a little bit more flexibility on this type of gutter. I mean, those are the sticky wickets.
Yeah.
I mean, those are the ones that keep coming up, and maybe we'll hear something, right? As Mr. Wilson mentioned, the hidden gutters. So maybe we'll, you know, we'll hear something, and we'll come back and have something to add.
And to kind of give you a little bit of when this process started, I mean, it's, we've been talking about this with the discussion and deliberation for almost maybe a year and a half or longer.
Three, four.
Four, you know, but, you know, having meetings, very sit-down meetings and discussing what these changes need to be, and the items that do get drug on, and, you know, there's different sides, different, you know, the historic preservation folks are like, hey, you know, we got to preserve this. And there are people economically, like, you know, how can we hold them to repair a window that's 100 years old if you're going to repair them? A lot of them are in good order, but they have a single pane glass. Well, it's highly energy inefficient. So now you put a pane of glass on the outside of it, a storm window, which is how we used to do 10 years ago, encourage everybody, hey, put a storm panel on the outside. But it's just as much cost and all of that process. So we've really gone a long way with the community coming to us, saying, hey, you know, they're doing it in other areas, why can't we put a good quality Anderson pellet-type window or one of the good brands? So I think we have really, as a board and staff, looked at all the things that become a thorn on everybody's side, and make the process simple for the applicants. And if the mayor and council have any additional suggestions over the next several weeks while we do firm up this process, please let Mr. Musavi and Catherine know, and we'll certainly incorporate those.
I thank you all for what you're doing and for the public outreach, and perhaps as part of that process, after you have all of those public outreach meetings, share back with those groups after you've had the cumulative, to let them know, you know, what recommendations you're considering and how those have impacted the plan. I think that just helps close the circle. But thank you all very much for your great work. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Thank you all for what you do. Sometimes I think we may fail to realize that you all are volunteering your time to do this, and the effort that it goes into it is very much appreciated. And I think this has been a very informative meeting, and you shared with us some things we can do to make this process smoother, and we'll be working with the city manager to make sure we get words out on that. And also, the community engagement, the proposals that you all be going out in the neighborhood, that's always a good thing, to make sure people understand, because that's a lot of what we get here. People just claim they don't understand or don't know. But thank you for what you do. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, for guiding us through this process. So we're going to ask you to adjourn your meeting, and we'll follow that with the recess wherever council.
Before I adjourn, I would just ask one last consideration, as I think the mayor and council sits through and discuss this, is if there is a way to discuss, or, and maybe not now, maybe in the months and years to come, to put a penalty in the process for somebody to totally ignore the guidelines, you know, to be serious about this, to take this as our history, as our fabric, and not just a little slap on the wrist for them to demolish accessory structure, take the windows down, replace the, you know, be serious about that, and give us that, then I think you're going to get a lot more people who will follow the guidelines and listen to, and try to be, become informed. Why would they become informed if they don't have to?
All right, well, that's going to take another meeting.
With that, I would adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
If we had some sort of a awards program annually for those projects within the historic district that we would judge to be meritorious, I think that would go a long way to giving awareness to what we do. But public loves, I love these programs that point out the best restaurants in the world.
Best looking house.
Here's the best preservation in the world. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all. You all, either one of you guys got anything to say?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. Best of heaven. It's on you. You can adjourn your group.
Well, everybody adjourned the meeting.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council will be in recess for about five minutes.
convene now and first order of business is closed meetings. There's a communication from my office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And you all have a list of current vacancies which was included in your agenda package. I need a motion.
So moved, second.
Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Valison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes, thank you. There's a communication from Councilmember Patricia White Boyd, Chairman of the City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter being the performances of the council-appointed officers pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Valison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes, thank you. Does a communication from the city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed session to discuss pending litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigation posture of the city pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended? Need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Valison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes, thank you. A communication from our city manager requesting a closed meeting to discuss the disposition of a portion of publicly owned property located at 2100 Countryside Road Northwest where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to 2.2 dash 3711 Code of Virginia as amended. Need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Valison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the motion passes, thank you. All right, item listed on the 2:00 PM council document requiring any discussion clarification or additions or deletions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to discuss the possible code change to section 2 dash 306 at this meeting or would you rather wait and have that done, have that discussion at the 2:00 o'clock meeting? It's my understanding that you had asked this to be walked on and I thought we'd take care of it this morning.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question that relates on this, if I may.
I prefer a 2:00 session.
Okay.
If we do a 2:00. Yes, sir.
But my question is going to be if we are hoping to make, to adopt these changes today, if so we're not, then 2:00 is fine.
My anticipation is, is that we would just discuss this, do a briefing on these proposed changes and then if there are any changes there too, or if council wishes, then adoption on the 18th.
The 2:00 PM is fine.
Okay. All right, hearing nothing on the addition, anymore on additions or deletions, I'm pleased to call on our city manager now to introduce the briefing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have one briefing, this is our monthly budget preparation, excuse me, briefing and just by way of recollection, back in the fall, of course, the budgeting process starts with your retreats, that then is followed with instructions that go out from me to the staff and then that is followed in January with the first of your briefings and of course you'll recall that at that January briefing, as has been the case, case traditionally, is where you receive your real estate reassessment information, which you did, and then also it's the first time we're able to actually present revenue projections, though we did have some revenue projections this year in the retreats and so that was your January briefing. Of course, last month at the February briefing, we provided information both about the five year CIP work as well as the FY '25, so the current year or the upcoming year CIP, which we'll talk about here in just a moment as well. And then in, for this update, we'll be focused on two things for this briefing. One of those will be on the current year or the first year CIP, so that's just going to be what we anticipate out of that five year CIP being included in what we present as the budget. Nothing has changed from what we shared with you, we just want to be able to reinforce that one more time because as you'll hear a bit later and as you know, that's the one part of the CIP we actually will be seeking action on at the time at which we present and you approve the budget out in May. The other part of the briefing today will focus on compensation. Those CIP and compensation were two of your top priorities as we move forward. We're not yet at a point of making any recommendations regarding compensation, what we're doing is kind of laying out the scenarios and the costs associated with those scenarios and also a reminder of the work that has taken place so far on compensation. So those will be the two primary topics today as we work through this. We are going to be kind of tag teaming as we go through this, so the budget team that's up here in the front row are going to be taking different turns with the different items that are being presented and then at the very end, I'll come back and kind of talk about both the next briefings that are coming up and then also we're kind of in the home stretch heading toward the actual submission of the budget, so we'll talk about that also as we go through. Certainly as we go through these, feel free to ask any questions that you might have and/or hold any questions you want and in the end, we'll grab all of those also as we move forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brent and he can get us started.
Thank you, Bob. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning and as the city managers indicated, we're going to brief you on, as I said, the revenues and expenditures first, very general at this stage, we'll bring much more detail back at the future sessions, the capital improvement view, compensation recap, and then the final compensation considerations for '25. So in the revenues and expenditures and I just, you know, as Bob mentioned, we have redeployed a lot of the analysts this year and they're all here today, so I would like to point out those that have the concentration in these certain areas, that do a lot of work here in the revenue expenditures. You know Jason is the revenue forecast. As you see, these are the numbers that were presented at the early January meeting, we are still working with those same numbers and as you see down the column, the calculation for the Runox City Public Schools has been made and I would say finalized, but not until the final budget has been developed, will it be, or the final revenue projections given before that will be completely financed as long as, as well as, okay, let me start over again, the visit Virginia's Blue Ridge. As you see, we pull about $110 million out to go to the prior agreements that we have that are top priorities of the council and as Bob mentioned, early forecast, early April, we will reforecast the revenues, primarily those that concern us a lot at that time, that it's been more of a educated guess up to this point has been the personal property, business license, using the Commissioner of Revenues, discussions using his information and meetings with him, as well as the real estate market update and working with the Real Estate Valuation Department, Casey Bratton, you know, it's a very dynamic market, we want to revisit our assumptions, make sure that we're on the right track, we believe we are, but we will have an official reforecast at that meeting in April, as Bob mentioned. And then, oh, the big one, state budget numbers hopefully will be available then as well and that's always the wild card in the annual budget work. Any thoughts or comments about revenues as we go forward? Looking at the expenditure priorities, just point out Cory, they all work together, but Cory works quite a bit in the expenditure area, working with departments very significantly and once again, the top priority is contractual inflationary increases, that is a sizable amount each year and we can share that with you as we bring more details later. The compensation is always huge for public entities, as you'll see here in a minute, we'll talk about the Public Safety Step Plan, the general population increases and then other issues related to pay that we're here prepared to initially discuss with you today. We'll talk about the capital and inflationary pressures, that cost of borrowing is still a problem, it has become under control a little bit, but that is just after significant increases that aren't really going back down. Departmental requests hugely important in delivering what the council wants to see in the community and then the external agencies increase request, which is always how we contribute back to those nonprofits, the entertainment, cultural community as well. So any, any general comments, questions about expenditures, revenues, anything? As Bob has mentioned, you'll see quite a bit more of these details in future meetings. So this will be, take us a few pages and I'll have Ian, if you don't mind, coming up, Ian. Ian Ha has been the analyst who's been primarily responsible for working with engineering the departments and everyone putting this together, so if she, if you have any detailed questions here, I will probably refer to Ms. Ha here for that. As you, as you look, I do want to point out again that our CIP is a five-year plan, but most of our effort in this development process is the first year or the fiscal '25 year that we're in and really other than going down the projects, well, maybe you should, everyone should see the projects. As we go down the list here, you'll see, it's a pretty impressive and challenging list for next year, but it's, it just goes to show you the needs that we have as well as being fortunate enough to have the funds to, as I go to the next page real quick. You'll see at the bottom of this page that we're looking at a, at an investment of $85 million in capital projects in the next fiscal year, which will include almost about $50 million of borrowing to look at that and that will, will do us for a little bit, but we do have an annual borrowing that we look at our capital for. So really, that's a, that's a pretty sizable chunk of capital that we're looking at next year that will also challenge our engineering staff and our procurement people and the departments who own those projects. So as we go to the next page, whoops, wrong way. Just to mention that briefly as well, the inflationary impact, once again, the inflationary pressures really continue to erode what we're able to do. I think that's the simple message here, I think, as we've looked through that, you know, back in 2007, our dollars only worth half of what it was back then, as while we continue to grow and do a good job here, the cost, trying to keep up with the cost increases are a significant challenge, but so far, so good with that. So that was a quick blaze through the CIP, I'll pause for a minute as y'all kind of contemplate, absorb it a little bit. Any, any questions for Ms. Ha, myself, or the city manager?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. Do we have a limit on our bond? I see usually it's around 49, 50 million, is that our max or can we do more?
It's based on, on the, the policy statements that we've adopted and so the first one, I guess, is, Bob, help me out here.
Yeah, well, I'll actually make it even simpler because I'll say it's actually limited by our cash flow.
Okay.
So we are well within our limits in terms of, a certain amount of debt has to be retired within a certain period of time, a certain amount of debt related to our total expenditures, there's a limit on what those are, but it really comes down to our ability to actually finance the debt service and you may recall and you'll see this in the budget when we presented, that we'll be adding another million dollars in the upcoming year into debt service in order to be able to meet the obligations we have for that piece, that's really the limiting factor. So we could borrow more than what we're showing based on policies, we don't have enough cash to actually do that.
And I'm glad you said that and I'm glad you said it publicly because I met with someone who was concerned that we would take $50 million from the city to fund that interchange and I said, well, I don't know that we would be able to fund that kind of debt and they said, well, surely you can, but not if we don't have the cash and.
Yeah, you all will recall kind of the, sort of the gymnastics we had to go through in order to be able to absorb the extra roughly $10 million for the Wasina Bridge as that cost went up.
Exactly.
So obviously anything, as a matter of fact, we've shared with you in the five year CIP discussion, that list of unmet needs, some of which are 10, 15, $20 million projects and we're not sure yet how those will get factored into upcoming CIPs because we are, this 49 million is probably the largest, I think, that we've actually borrowed, except for maybe when the high schools were under construction and it, and if you look forward and remember in the next four years of the CIP, we're not borrowing nearly as much as we are this current or what we're proposing in the next fiscal year.
Well, I'm glad you cleared that up because there, there's a rumor, some misconceptions that, that that's what the city is going to do to fund that interchange for Evan Springs and I don't see how that would be feasible, but I'm glad that you stated that publicly.
Yeah, and I did want to make one other and it's on this page, just one clarification because it's, if anybody, I know we've, this is out publicly for folks to see and it's up here as well, so I don't want anyone to make them say, if you look down toward about two thirds of the way down, it says Commonwealth Attorney's Law Library renovation, so I want to make sure that it was clear that we're not renovating the Commonwealth Attorney's Law Library, we're actually taking, if you remember, the old law library was actually decommissioned and we moved actually the Commonwealth Attorney's folks in there temporarily, so this is actually to renovate the old law library for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, so just didn't want anybody thinking we're going to spend $1.6 million on a place to collect law books and stuff, so, not that there's anything wrong with law books, but we're not spending, we're not spending.
Encourage all lawyers to use online services and save trees.
It is, it is really in order to actually get them out of temporary offices into permanent And, and we will come back at the, the budget time when we submit the budget, bring it forward to you, to look at the full five year CIP again, but we won't be asking for approval, obviously, on those outlying four years, just this first year.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, before you move off of the capital ones and these are just, just for clarity for my purposes. I'm looking at on page seven where you have the Orange Avenue Capacity Project, which I know is a small scale, but could you state where this part of Orange Avenue, I was trying to recall it, from the regional, Allegheny Regional Commission when we went over it, where this project is located?
Yeah, that, that is actually part of that project at the intersection, or the interchange really between Williamson and 581 and then that section of Orange, so if you remember, they're going to redo the ramps in that area and re-signalize kind of the intersection at Williamson and, and Orange, so it's that, it's that area.
Okay, I was thinking it was up at 11th Street because I know they have been talking about that one as well.
And I believe this is only part of the funding, there's a VDOT project that is.
Right, I guess that's what I wanted to make sure. And then looking at your aviation drive and I know this was a couple of years or so ago when we, when you brought that before us for the pedestrian improvement, so are we now at a point almost since you got 7.8 million to be looking at doing that, extending the greenway, is that what that is?
These are, these are all.
Where we're making sidewalks in and.
These are all sidewalks and crosswalks and other kinds of improvements.
Right, from Valley going by Valley View.
Yes.
But do you have a date as to when that project would be starting?
I can find that out, I do not know. I know the funding has been secured, so this is not one where we're applying for the funding, it's already been secured and we can find out what the start date would, and also what the duration of the project would be.
Right, that would be important. Under your streetscape improvements, I know it's only 500,000 in bonds, have you defined where these streetscapes are?
No, we do those each year depending on the work that's being done, both in our neighborhoods as well as with other street projects, we'll make that determination as to where, where those will be and it was on the top of my head where those are happening this year, but we'll, we'll, we'll get to you what's going on this year. I think a piece of that was tied with the Belmont Fallon Target area with it also. So this is a, this $500,000 is kind of a rolling number we put in the, in the budget each year and then the individual projects are determined year by year as they go through and, and I can, I think they have an idea where these will go and so I can get that for you all also.
Okay, and I know we talked about the Eighth Street in Grayson with the 2.5 million dollar grant, do you have, I guess my question, let me just say it this way, has that project been discussed in detail with the community?
It is beginning to be, so if you, if you, you may recall that we've had general information, but now there are, there are specific individual contacts being made by folks whose, I can't say their property be impacted because it's all in the right of way, but certainly their, the situation in front of their house is going to change and so those contacts are being made individually by property owners and that'll go on as the final design is kind of continuing its way forward. This is a fairly lengthy project and I want to say like maybe 18 months in its totality.
That's what I was going to ask, how long would the project be? The other one, the next one is the Gainsborough Neighborhood Streetscape where you're using ARPA money 2.9. Is this the road that, the design to change up the, the design of a Gainsborough Road?
Yes, so this is the, this is the extension of the paving project that's going on in downtown and all of the changes in the, the street markings, if you will, out into the Gainsborough area and this was the project that, if you may recall, this was the project that was in both the Gainsborough plan and then has been a subject of conversation with the neighborhoods for a while, but yes, that's this project and it, it will probably be one of the first projects that moves because of its association with ARPA funds because we've got to get those spent.
So when we talk about, you mentioned street paving, but you're changing up the design of the street too.
Correct.
Along with paving.
Yes, so similar to what we've done in, on Brandon and we just did out at Ninth and Southeast, different designs, but where we go in with a street that we're doing a paving, we also look and see if there's a way in which we can advance the council's priorities on complete streets, so that's when we start looking at, is there a way to introduce bike lanes, is there a way to make safer crosswalks, all, all of those kinds of things. A lot of that can be done by signage, striping and other kinds of lower cost without changing the road itself and that's what's happening with those ones.
Yeah, because I was at the meeting with, with the two neighborhood groups, but I found out that the community as a whole in the Gainsborough area was not aware and I guess I just want to make sure that through transparency that we definitely, because I know two of the churches said, I talked to the pastors, who said no, they were not aware and I'm just concerned about the, the intersection from the connecting streets that come to Gainsborough to make sure that they are aware that there are going to be some significant changes in that design and also letting them know how long this process may take.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be more of those conversations, there have been, as you indicated, there have been extensive like year plus long conversations with those two neighborhood associations about this project and, and like in so many other instances, if, if folks in the area are not directly engaged with those neighborhood associations, it is.
That's the key, they're not.
It is very difficult and we rely on them to get that information out, but we will be having more, especially as we get closer to the actual.
Yeah, I just suggest because of the historic nature of what goes on in Gainsborough that you really reach out to the churches. To me, that's more imperative because they are the ones that can share that information, more so because the residents, so most of the area residents attend those churches and I just feel that when you only have a group of 10 people on a neighborhood association group, that's not going to get the word out as much as if we connect with those churches, especially in this neighborhood, not as much across the.
And we can easily do that, especially as it gets closer to.
Yeah, I just think it's imperative that they know about it. I'm looking at also, let's talk about Washington Park site amenities where you've got the 500,000, again, I'm just doing it for clarification, just so the public can hear it again, what amenities are we looking at when we talk about the Washington Park?
And we don't know yet because that'll be a conversation we have with the residents in that area.
Okay, so we'll be with them, okay.
Similar to Eureka Park, while we're making other investments, in this case, of course, we already invested in the basketball courts and obviously we're doing the pool, we've also set aside money so that we can look at other amenities in the park. In Eureka, we did that in this current budget year so that as the Eureka Recreation Center is done, similarly, there's an opportunity to spend dollars on other amenities within that park, but it will be, that will be driven by further conversations with the neighborhood or, I'm going to say neighborhood, in that case neighborhoods, and also other interested parties in the area. You know, there's, there's obviously talks about like shelters, there's talks about other kinds of tree plantings, those are things we'll have conversations regarding.
Mayor Lee, can I ask a quick question on that? Can I ask a quick question just on that? Is, and this is just for fiscal year '25, my understanding when we got something earlier, there are future years where there's a much larger plan for Washington Park where that we have set out for CIP or is this mainly what that is? Because I remember a larger number of a million or something, but it wasn't set out till fiscal year '26, '27, potentially later.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the five year CIP, there are definitely more parks projects out there for Washington Park, I'd have to go back out and look to see.
But this is just one piece, this isn't that whole project, that's all I wanted to check, thank you.
Before I move to the next one, I need to go back on the Gainsborough one. The 2.9 is part of how much money has been allocated to ARPA money to go into the Gainsborough neighborhood?
So there's five, there's $5 million of ARPA money going in and the two principal projects are this project and then funding for, ironically, we just talked about this, the historic district over in the area to facilitate upgrades, upfits and other costs for the homes that are actually in that area, those are the two biggest projects that are in there, but there's 5 million total.
So the 5 million is to go toward these two projects?
There's more than those two, those just are the two, the two top projects, there are other projects associated with a playground area and some open space and possibly some kind of small amphitheater, those are the other.
But that's all on the historic side, but not on the northwest side going toward Fifth Street?
These, all of the projects that have identified, yes, are all in the, in kind of from Gainsborough Street.
In the historic side from Patton all the way back over toward the Civic Center, but not any money for the other side of Gainsborough, southwest side?
Yeah, as far as the ARPA money, that is correct. Now, the plan itself, of course, is a plan that's a 10-year plan, so there will be requests in the future for additional funding to do projects elsewhere within that area, that there's a lot more projects, there are a lot more projects identified in the plan, there's just that first shock with those, so, yes.
Okay, and then there was a question raised at the meeting with, that was asked of me and I was trying to explain it again, originally there was $10 million for Gainsborough and five was taken out and placed elsewhere.
Yeah, there was, there were $5 million of ARPA funds and $5 million of general fund. The $5 million of general fund was tied up with other, other projects in Gainsborough including the reworking of the Lawson Building as well as the acquisition and redevelopment of the clinic. When those opportunities went away, with your support, we repurposed that 5 million to the Eureka Recreation Center.
Right, okay, okay, so it's, in other words, they didn't get to keep the money.
Correct, and that was, and that was general fund, that was not ARPA.
Right, but the same, the same principle, 5 million was taken out, so Gainsborough did not benefit from the money, I just wanted them to know that.
And I did get a clarity on the, on the sidewalk project of the airport, so that will begin in the spring of '25 and it's a one-year duration.
Oh, okay, okay, and let me see here, I'm just trying to, when, when you brought up before when we were looking at the capital improvements and we were talking about prioritizing and we're still waiting to find out what kind of order you'll put them in, I'm looking at such things as roof replacements, is that part of some of those items that you shared with us or these are just over the.
No, so they're, I mean, yes and no, so these are roof replacements for city facilities, so the city buildings, not counting the Burglum Center which has its own item. There are roof replacements in that unfunded list that I had mentioned that you're referencing that still go beyond this, this particular cost and yes, we will, we will be bringing back, trying to think of a good way to describe it, it's going to be prioritized, but if you remember, there's probably 20 items, so you're not going to see items 1 through 20, we're trying to group them together as kind of high priority and medium priority and so on and, and yes, there are roof, roof replacement projects definitely on that unfunded list.
Okay, and the same thing with, which is with your HVAC and structural projects?
Yes, that is correct.
Same thing for city properties?
That is correct.
Okay, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead.
If we, with the question there, we'll move on to compensation and, you know, we have seven priority areas here at the city that we, we focus on and I will tell you that in every priority, compensation is a, is a top need, top concern for, for those who, who manage the people and the projects there, you know, because we are a service organization and, and that assumes people are, are performing those services and so, and I, I'm going to jump in front of Bob and thank the council for what they've done in the last several years during the pandemic of making that a high priority, hitting those areas of, of critical need that we have and then considering forward to, to make that a top priority view as well, so thank you for that. As we go, I'm going to turn this over to Trinity and I think Angela will be assisting him a little bit. This is, we spent a lot of time on this, as, as most of council is aware, we went, spent a lot of time last year and this is the continuation of that, so I will turn it over to Trinity and Angela to assist.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of council.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. So the purpose of the compensation kind of plan overview here, we wanted to kind of give you an idea of what we've done for the last four years. So the post-pandemic is what we really wanted to focus on, on what we've kind of adopted year after year. So the first year here that you see on the screen is the fiscal year '21. So we started off with, we budgeted for two separate categories, public safety and general population. So if you look to my left or your left and my right, we have the hazard pay, non-hazard pay, sheriff's office bonuses via the state for the sheriff, and then the hazard for non-hazard via our general fund. And then for the general population, we have the, no increase was adopted in FY '21, but what we did was a bonus system for $1,000 for full-time employees and $500 for the part-time employees. So as I move on to the next slide, you will notice the increase from FY '21 to FY '22. So as you can see, the total increase for compensation was 4.6 million from that prior year, as I mentioned. We have, again, public safety, general population. In this year, we kind of switched it up because we were kind of bouncing back from the post-pandemic, as I mentioned. General population received a 3% merit increase. And then we had the public safety, again, we went back to the bonus system as we were kind of getting back those revenues that we lost in the COVID year. So as you can see, $2,000 for public safety, $1,000 bonus for non-public safety. And then we had that 1,500 retention bonus there. And then the last piece was, we began that first phase of the step pay plan increase for the police. And as I mentioned, we were kind of trying to get back into where we are as of today. Fiscal year '23, we started picking up. Again, we added, from 4.6, we added another 7.8 million into the compensation. Again, public safety, we're moving from those bonuses we did in the last two. We're now building to the base. We have the first phase of the step pay plan increase for the fire EMS. And then we have the first phase, step pay plan increase for the sheriff's office step pay plan. And then we also completed that first phase from '21 for the police department for the, to increase their step to the final phase. And then for the general population, as I mentioned, in fiscal year '21, you notice we did not have a merit increase. In FY '23, we have a 5% increase, so that was kind of closing the gap. And also, we introduced that increase, the minimum wage for $15 an hour. And then lastly, before we kind of move on to what '25 holds for us, we have FY fiscal year '24. So in this year, as you notice, we have that $9.2 million number. So it began as a $12 million number as we adopted the Gallagher Study as of fiscal year '24. So these are the steps that we took to kind of ensure that the employees were kind of compensated based based on the study that was presented. So we had the public state, public safety increased for the next step. We have employee salaries, we had no, a minimum of $2,000, no more than 7%, and no less than the $2,000. So that was kind of the parameters that Angela and her department came up with to kind of ensure that we stay within that $9 million number based on our revenues last year. Directors appointed and elected officials received a 3% increase. And then approximately 205 employees remained below the minimum in FY '24.
Let me ask you something, we're elected officials, do we get that 3%?
Yeah, it was the, it was the comp board positions of elected officials.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask anything.
I have just one question.
Yes.
So if, for some reason, this council decides to do an increase for its appointed officials, do we need to have that done by this fiscal year in time for next year, or should it be?
Yeah, it would be part of this year's, but so it's, it is built into the agreements that you have with appointed officials and honestly with the elected comp board positions too, that whatever the general population receives, that is passed through to those appointed. If you, so that's already built into this budget?
So this is already built in, but.
If you wanted to go beyond that.
Beyond that, or a step, yeah.
Yes, we would just need to know that so we could include.
Because you, because you would definitely have to put it into the budget. Not saying that we are, but we are in discussion, so we need to know at what point you would need that information to incorporate into this budget.
Yeah, we're at that stage now.
Okay, well, thank you, that would be now.
Real quickly, just for clarification, already in starting to draft pay ordinance, waiting for a lot of this material? We've already put in for your appointed officers, the line in there, so it's very transparent what the new salary would be.
Okay, okay, all right, well, we'll, we're working on evaluations now, so we'll get to that point.
All right, so moving on to the compensation history. So moving, looking at those slides that have just presented, the FY '21 to '24, that total increase was 21 million across the board. And that's about a 19% increase despite, as I mentioned, the effects of the pandemic.
Yeah, and I just want to pause there for a second and kind of echo on something that Brent said earlier, because I don't think we can say this enough. Obviously, over a three- to four-year period, to be able to increase the employees, our police officers, our firefighters, our folks that work on the sanitation that are in our transportation, our engineers, our directors, all of those folks, to be able to increase salary by almost $22 million in that period of time is no insignificant task. And certainly want to acknowledge the council's support through that, because we're not, we're not done yet, but we're getting, we've made substantial headway on those salaries throughout the entire organization. And I think this this chart and these numbers really illustrate that. In the next couple of slides, you'll see what we're starting to see as benefit of that investment, and which is, of course, one of the reasons to do this.
So kind of moving on from what the city manager spoke about, we, this is the distribution by pay grade. So we have four quarters, quarter one, two, three, and four. And as you mentioned, this investment of about 21 million has kind of moved most of the folks from, as you can notice, from pay grade eight all the way to maybe 14, 15, to that median of the Q2. So it's telling us that we are kind of making headway in our compensation. And the average salary increased by 22%, so it was $47,000 FY '22, and now it's $57,000 in FY '23. And this is just to kind of highlight what the organization turnover has been. As you can see, that fourth column there, the total terms without the retirements. And we know with 2018, it was a low number compared to where we were in '23. But as I mentioned, we were kind of bouncing back from the pandemic. So we're slowly kind of going back to those decrease in turnover and try and retain employees based on what we are adopting with the compensation. So our turnover rate decreased overall 2.9% from 2022 without the retirees. And then lastly, part of our recap, we wanted to give you an idea of what the region is doing. So part of Virginia, as you can see that we have Charlottesville there, all the way to Lynchburg, kind of broken out in where the unemployment data is. Virginia's unemployment rate as of December '23 was about 3%, and we are right by 2.7%, an increase from 2.5% to 2.7% from December of '22. So again, we are still kind of experiencing on and off with the unemployment, just because, again, as a region, we're still affected.
Yeah, and I think the significance of, thank goodness, that we were able to actually invest that $22 million in those compensation increases. The downside, if you will, is obviously, like everyone, inflation has eaten into those gains. And as as Trinity just shows in these numbers, still, the region remains effectively at full employment, which means we are still in a very, very competitive position for both salaries, as well as just in terms of recruitment, which is a good place to be. It's just a place that we need to be aware of, that, you know, this is not one and done. We succeeded, we got compensation increase to a point, and now we have nothing to worry about. I think with inflation still as where it is, and then these unemployment numbers in our area, we're going to still face pressure. And we'll talk a little bit about that when we get into the considerations for FY '25.
I do have a question, if I could.
Yes, ma'am.
With regards to on page 16, I'm looking at your pay grades, if memory serves me correctly, up to your nine, so I'm looking at five through nine. The average salary between for grade five, I'm surprised we still have grade fives. I can only imagine what grade five is. What is grade five? Is that unskilled labor way, way down about, and I'm answering my own question, I think. I'm looking at a less than $30,000, $27,000, $25,000?
Remember, everyone, because you increased the minimum wage to $15 an hour, those are those positions. So there are positions that.
Right, right, but I'm just looking at salaries currently, even, and if that's $15 an hour, that puts them at number five, what does that put them at? What is the salary?
That's like $31,700.
So number, a grade five makes about $31,000. No one is making $27,000. Okay, because I was told that.
We used to, we did used to, before the $15 an hour, that pay grade, and it still shows.
I know, I know.
It still shows that.
Again, I do these things, when I hear questions, I want the public to hear the answer to let them know I am asking your questions for you.
The good thing with that too is if you look at where, one of the reasons, one of the things the $15 an hour has done with those is it's pushed them more toward the median of that pay grade, because that pay grade is still set lower than the $15, we don't pay it. So you'll see in FY '25 that the bottom of that pay grade will go away, and it will actually come up to the $15 an hour minimum. But that has pushed folks over into more than the middle, if you will, of the pay grade.
So your 205 employees that you were referencing, I believe, on one of these pages, that are those the ones you still need to bring up?
That is, yes, and if you remember, when we did it last year, when we did the briefing, those were not concentrated anymore, they're scattered all across different pay grades. But yes, they're, those are the ones, so our, and we'll talk about this in just a second, but our top two compensation priorities are to move public safety to their next step in their step pay plan, followed by getting those 205 to their minimum, to the to the target minimum that we were not able to do last year. But yes, those are those positions.
So the 205, they are still not making $15?
No, no, they're, they're making over that.
They're making, oh, okay, that's what I was just trying to.
Yes, so in each pay grade, so let's, I'm just using as a hypothetical, let's say that your pay grade, the new target minimum out of the study was $57,000, let's say. And even after the 7% increase that we did, you were still making 55. You're technically one of those 205 below that new minimum target.
Or if you was making $39,000 plus and you were trying to get to 40, you would be getting there now, okay, okay.
But because it spreads across different pay grades, it's different for each each position.
I understand now, okay, thank you.
So moving on to FY '25, so this is where we, we're bringing up to you a proposal of what the FY '25 would look like. And again, these numbers are not final, these are just kind of assumptions of where we're leaning towards. So to give you a recap from what the city manager mentioned, we will be prioritizing, progressing the public safety to the next step, and then we will adjust positions affected by the compensation board, increasing the 205 employees who did not reach that target minimum in '24.
And if I can stop there for a second, those three priorities, though we have, you know, we're not final with the budget, so we know that we have, there is enough revenue to hit those three targets. So those, and we'll show you kind of what the costs are associated with those in just a moment, but we can hit those three. Everything after that is what we're still trying to wrestle with as to what we can and cannot do related around those. But those top three priorities will be, will be met with the budget submissions.
So that next one would be apply a certain percentage to raise the general population. So after we've met the public safety for the next step, the 205 employees, it leaves a bucket for the general population, that's what we have not decided on. And then the other items they mentioned, we still have to consider the starting pay for the police. We have the paramedics pay, the current general assembly actions, and then directors and leadership would be the last one. So moving on to that compensation proposal, so you have about, from 1% to 5%. 1% represents 780,000, and raising the 205 employees to the minimum will be 1.2 million. And then the public safety next step for police, fire, and sheriff will be just about a million. And then we have those additional costs for vacant positions, minimum targets, new hires and promotions. So what that is, is, for example, city manager always mentions, if an employee is, if there's a vacant position for $50,000, and the hire comes in at 65, we still need to account for the $15,000 that we did not budget for, just because they came in at a much higher salary. So that's what that 5.2 million is. And we still need to add, one of these scenarios, 1%, 2%, 3%, all the way to 5, to add to that 7.6.
So the, what's showing on there, that 7.7 million roughly, that's when I said that we we know that we have enough revenue to cover that piece of it, that's what's covered, the 7.7, can cover all of those expenses. What we're now trying to determine is, as Trinity's just mentioned, can can we also identify funds to take us into 1%, 2%, 3%, where does that go? And and then if you see the footnote that Trinity's added here, the step increase for public safety is about a 3% increase. So if we actually moved, if we had funds to go into something like a 4% or 5% increase for the general population, it would actually be more than what's shown on here because we would have to go back and also make further adjustment to public safety. We haven't calculated any of that, because I'll be honest, the 4% and 5% numbers are probably outside of the ability of what we have funding-wise. But if we did, then we would ultimately need to recalculate those. But it gives you a sense of what those percentage increases for the general population would add to that 7.7 million dollar number.
Mr. Cal, may I have a question for Mr. Cal? Mr. Cal, if we have some positions that are vacant and have have been vacant for some time, and it seems that that the whatever department is functioning without impacting our service delivery, of course, we don't want to do anything that will impact service delivery. Is there anything we can do to maybe reallocate those or or put them back into the pool and use that funding?
There's a couple of things we do. One of those is, one is reallocation, so if there's a position, and usually our cutoff is a year. If a position's been vacant for a year or more, we'll look at that position. One of the things we can do is we could reallocate that vacant FTE to one of the FTEs that's being requested new from a department, as far as, that's one thing we can do. The other thing that we can do is we can simply eliminate that position, and and then those dollars go back into what we're trying to do on the rest of compensation. And then the third thing that we can do, in some cases, a position has remained vacant, not because there's not a need there, but because we simply have not been able to afford or fill the position. And sometimes, we've actually, and really good examples of these are our folks that are our plumbers and electricians and HVAC contractor folks that we have. We can't fill those positions, the market is, even even as dollars raise in compensation, the positions are not, people are not there to fill those. So we may, in those instances, take those dollars and actually convert them to contracts for service, because we actually need to buy that service with it. So there's at least those three different things, and yes, we are going through that exercise right now to kind of identify what positions have been vacant for that year or more. We'll have a conversation with the directors to get a better sense of what the reasons for that are and what the implications might be, and then we can make one of those three decisions with those positions. And a fourth, obviously, a fourth one is, you may also leave it there to be filled, but that's, again, that would be dependent on whether it can be filled.
Okay, I'm sure, I knew you would have some sort of process, I was just curious of what the.
And I don't know how many of those there are, because we're going through that right now to try to make that determined. It's not, it's not an enormous number, but there certainly are some out there.
So it's not enough to make a huge impact on on?
No, because in most of those cases, I'll use my example again with electricians, plumbers and stuff, what it's really going to do is have to convert into another spend in a different way with contract.
Contract, yeah, okay.
A few of them, I think we can repurpose, but most of them will end up having just to use that cash for another.
For another, and that's fine, you answered my question, thank you.
Can I get back on that? With regards to that, if departments, and this is where I go with the unfunded, if the if the position has been vacant, like you say, for a year, and you look to unfund that position or to move it, and at some point, the Department for Services, they would have to come back and more or less put in why they need this position back? Because it's no longer part of their department?
No, that's a good question. So you, there's another way that you can do, so when we take a position, a position, one of the things we could do is we can leave it still on the books, if you will, as an FTE, but not funded. And that would prevent that scenario where we've said, this position is still a really important position, but for one reason or another, we've not been able to fill it, not going to fill it, but we're not going to eliminate the position, we're just going to defund the position, allocate those dollars someplace else. The department, in future budgets, we would have to add the money back in, but you wouldn't have to go through the whole process of actually justifying a new FTE, if you will, for that. So that's another way that we can, and have dealt with that in some cases. In some ways, libraries are a good example of this, where the library may be having difficulty in filling an upper-level librarian position. So what they'll do is they'll actually underfill that position, so they may fill it with a. So they may fill it with a lower paid, lower experienced position, hoping to grow it into that. But we wouldn't take that librarian three, for example, off the books, even though it's being filled slightly lower as we work. We would just lower the funding for it down to what that position actually was, was using. But that's an example of that.
And also, I was looking at page seventeen on your organizational turnover. Now, when I see terms, is that the, what is the total of terms?
Terminate, terminations.
Two hundred and seventy-five is the number of terminations?
Correct. And that includes retirements, and then that other number takes the retirements out of it.
Right, which would be like two hundred and thirty. So those occur, those would be positions that you're looking at that are not filled yet?
No, mo, most of those would have been filled. So somebody, say, left in June, and so that would show up on this, that that person, that position was vacated in June, and it may have been filled in August. There are some of those that have not been filled, but no, we have nowhere near that number that are, we have near that number that are vacant. We don't have anywhere near that number that have been vacant for an extended period of time.
So, so what, what is the number for the ones that are now still vacant or unfilled? Do you know?
I want to say it's like two forty, is that sound right? Two eighty-four are currently vacant?
So you have currently two hundred and eighty-four, okay.
And that will, that number obviously will fluctuate through the year. But yeah, but.
Right, but currently, as it stands now, those are vacant positions that you're trying to fill. Okay.
I just wanted to share back to your original question, Councilmember Moon Reynolds, custodians, those pay grade fives.
We want to get to the.
Oh, sorry. Custodians are pay grade fives, as well as some of our admin assistant ones. So those are some of the pay grade five positions that we do have.
All right, thank you.
So we will be, I'll, I'll mention this in just a second with the rest of it, but we, we will be finalizing this with you all and, and bringing it forward at the next, at the next briefing, and I'll talk about that in just a moment.
So that was, that was actually the last slide for conversation. So moving on to the, yep, budget timeline.
Trinity, can you advance to the next one?
Next one?
Okay, thank you. So we'll, we'll come back to any other questions that you have here in just a minute. I just want to kind of give you the rest of the timeline as we move forward. So April first will be your next budget briefing, and there's at least four things that we'll be covering on that. One of those Brent had mentioned, which is we will reset the revenue projection at that time because we'll know more information. We've been working off of a January revenue number. That revenue number could go up or down. That's what we're working on right now. That will affect, obviously, some of what we're talking about and one of the reasons why we haven't finalized compensation yet. We, we will be finalizing compensation and be sharing that with you at that briefing on, on April one. We'll be sharing that with the directors a day or two before that so that they're aware of it rather than simply watching the, the meeting with it. But it won't be finalized, obviously, until we submit the budget. That's, we'll be sharing that with you. We will also at that time be doing what we refer to, for those of you that have been around with us enough times, have an update on balancing. I can tell you right now, we're not in balance, and what that means is all of the things that we have received and that we're processing for needs exceed revenues. And so, again, not a surprise, that's everywhere. And so we are trying to get that as close as we can to balanced. April one, we still won't be balanced, but hopefully we'll be relatively close to that balance, and we'll share that number with you because on April fifteenth, we will be balanced because in order to submit the budget to you, I have to present a balanced budget. We will also at the April one meeting be bringing you all, asked for, for lack of a better term, kind of a sensitivity analysis associated with tax rate changes. So we'll be bringing that back also with you. We will show you what a one and two cent deduction would do and a one and two cent increase would do from both the revenue standpoint. And probably at that time, we would give you a sense of what the implication of that would be. So if, and I can tell you right now that almost a million dollars is, is a penny. So what we would do is we would say, okay, if there was a one cent reduction in the tax rate and a million dollars came out of the budget, this is how we would adapt to that. This is what we would do. It won't be very specific, but we'll say we wouldn't do, I'm just making this up, but instead of a three percent pay increase, it's a two percent pay increase, something like that. Same would be true if there was an addition. If we had an addition, this is what we would do with that. So that'll be at your April one meeting also, and so that'll, that'll make up the bulk of that April first briefing. And then on April fifteenth is when I will submit the proposed balanced budget here at the, at the council. April twenty-fifth, you all will have your public hearings on the recommended budget and on the associated tax rates. Then May sixth is your, is your workshop on what you've heard from the, both the presented budget as well as anything that you've heard through the public hearings and any adjustments that you wish to make to the budget that was submitted. Because on May thirteenth is when the budget will be, will be approved at that point, along with, as Tim has said, a whole series, and you all know there's a whole series of resolutions and ordinances that accompany that, around things like the pay ordinance and those types of things. So, so those are the, the dates that lie ahead. So again, we're kind of in the rounding the corner toward that sort of home stretch associated with that. As part of the balancing update, we will also be sharing with you some of the items that are, those items that we are putting forward with new changes in service, service levels. So if we're proposing an increase in a service level, it'll be in that also. It'll still be, it's not going to be exhaustive, but it'll be representative of what those costs are. And I can give you an example and say, we might be looking to buy more small equipment or technology, or, you know, we've got, for example, we've got to start thinking about how we add staff for the pool as it comes on, online. So you'll see those things also at that April first meeting as a part of that discussion of the, of where we are in terms of the balancing associated with the budget.
Mr. Cal, maybe in April or one of those days, would you include in your briefing the unfunded from compensation to CIPs? When do you include that?
The what part?
The, the things, like the CIPs that are unfunded?
Oh, the list, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, that'll be on the April first.
The April first, okay, yes.
Yeah, and that goes back to what Councilmember Moon Reynolds talked about, where we're kind of the unfunded list and also sort of the prioritization associated with it. You know, the, the good thing, as you all know about the outlying four years, is we're not asking for approval of those, but we also know generally that's where we're headed in the subsequent years. But yes, we'll bring that information.
Yeah, we have sort of a priority in the retreat, but I'm sure some things got shifted around in the interim.
Fairly. Comments slash questions? All right, go ahead. First, City Manager Bob, I, I found the Washington Park side of amenities saying from a previous presentation, it's in the next fiscal year, this year twenty-six, we're looking at doing seven hundred and fifty thousand. So it'd be one point two million over the two years. And that's something I remember from a presentation we had last year on it. My request would be when you do the presentation on the first and you list all of the projects that are funded and that are not being funded in CIP. One way I think it's been collectively bundled in the past, and we've just seen it listed as like Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I see now that you're doing, you're breaking these items out so that we're aware of them.
Yes, you will not see, so you will, we started this last year where if it says like Fire Master Plan or Library Master Plan, you're going to see the specific project under each one of those.
Yeah, either of those could be grouped or if there could just be a note of designation. I mean, I've gone through and made some notes myself in order to be able to tell. And I don't know if that will be the appropriate meeting or if it will be later in the year when we're making updates to the plan to figure out. We have so, a variety of funding sources that have been used to address our rec centers, our ongoing maintenance. We have bonds with these other issues that we're looking at going forward. And what are the, what is the long-term funding for Parks and Rec Master Plan? And I know currently we're not on pace to, to get there anytime soon, but, but what the complete list of those needs are as relates to CIP. But also, because when, when compensation was brought up earlier, I know you mentioned libraries and some of our other positions, but when I think back to urban forestry, I know one of the issues is related to our compensation study and getting those pay rates up to where we're making sure that someone that we're bringing in is not going to be making more than someone who's been here for a number of years. And then that's been part of the issue that I think have led to a lot of these vacancies and why they continue to stay vacant for a period of time. And we have these needs and end up contracting out as we need to, but, but as we get compensation there, I think that everything will balance out easier going forward. But thank you for this presentation. I think it's well put together. I've always got in the mind on parks, so that's just some things I wanted to pull out.
Well, and using parks is a good example. I think two, two points, one of them goes back to something that Councilmember Moon Reynolds mentioned also with kind of the, why we look at some of the vacant positions that might have been open longer and what's kind of behind that. So urban forestry is one of those. We have a couple of urban forestry positions that have been open a considerable amount of time. And part of what we've got to do is look and say, okay, is that, is that really linked because we haven't been able to finish where we need to be with compensation? And if so, we're not going to eliminate those positions because we've got to make sure that they have a shot at filling those. So that would be an example of, of that piece of it. The other, too, is goes back to something also you said is even if we're able to fund what we've talked about in compensation, and if we're able to progress on that one, two, or three percent kind of arrangement, we still are at a point where most of our positions, not in public safety, but in our non-public safety, are, are still pretty much grouped together. We haven't yet reached the point at which we can start addressing the infamous kind of compression because we've just been doing the last few years just to get everybody up to what our new target minimum is. And we, and we probably will not, I doubt we'll be able to actually tackle that in any kind of seriousness with this budget year. But just so you're aware, that, that issue will result, will remain, and again, no surprise, while we're doing all of this, the market continues to move. You know, even though we've invested heavily in public safety, we still have the lowest, the lowest starting pay for police officers in the region. So even as we're making these investments, even as they're benefiting from them, the market continues to move, and so we've got to keep addressing those. And that's why you saw on that list that Trinity had up there, kind of some of those other things that are on there. So we're going to try to address some of those, too, but just understand that, not that compensation's ever finished, but we're still, there's still work left even after FY twenty-five, whatever we're able to do.
Thanks for saying that, Bob, publicly in terms of the police officers. We've done that, but they're still the lowest paid in the region.
Starting pay.
Starting pay. I think that's, that has been brought up to me a number of times in terms of the starting pay and that, you know, we bring people out with us, they come out and they're trained and they're recruited by other police stations and police officers, departments in the region.
And, and we have the same, you know, paramedics are the same, engineers are the same, technology positions, trying to hire technology positions is because we are, paramedics, we're competing with Corillian. Technology, we're competing with, you know, Wells Fargo and the new announcement that they had with the positions. I mean, there's just, is when you see those unemployment numbers in a market like ours that is not growing in people, it becomes an increasingly very competitive environment. And being able to keep up with that is, it's the reason that compensation has been, at your, your request, it's been the top two or three priorities for the last three or four years, and, and I suspect will continue to be for the foreseeable future as we go, go forward.
Thanks. Bob, just a follow-up question on that related to compensation. We've, we've done, we've made significant investment to get compensation up and at somewhat competitive levels. I know we still are challenged there in some particular fields. Will you all also be bringing projections on how we can sustain that over the next four to five years?
Yeah, I think I've, I've said this, I think I said it last year, is, you know, anytime you increase compensation, it's not a one time. So that twenty-two million dollars that we showed is a new cost that we have to be able to sustain going forward. Whatever we add this year is a cost we have to be able to sustain. And usually, you want to tie that to something that is as sustainable in terms of a revenue source. So typically, you want to look at your, say, real estate, for example, which is a pretty stable kind of source and say, hey, let's not get our compensation increases too far out ahead, or if at all, of where something stable like that is. Now, some part of sales tax is stable also, some part of it is not. Last year, I think I had made the, the statement and I would reiterate it again, I think we're in territory that puts that at risk, but we have no choice. I think that, you know, we're, we're having, all of us, and when it's private sector and, and certainly our adjoining public sector friends, is all of us are having to compensate to remain competitive at a rate where we are depending upon economic growth to sustain rather than being able to say definitively, we've got the money there year after year, there's never going to be a question. We, in order for us to keep compensating at where we need to to be competitive, we're going to have to keep seeing economic growth going, going forward. And fortunately, we've seen that over the last several years, but, you know, there's, there's no guarantee. And if you see that constriction, it's not sustainable. If you see that constriction, contraction, if you see that contraction, then you will end up in a position where those vacant positions that I've mentioned would actually be eliminated as, as an example, simply to be able to keep those that are employed at the compensation levels that we need to. You know, so we're not too far ahead of that, but we are certainly into territory where it's kind of like, yeah, there is, there is some risk of our ability to sustain these increases. But again, if we're going to have folks across the organization in any of these jobs, we don't have a choice. We have to be compensating in order to stay relatively competitive to the market. And it's not just compensation. I mean, you all have helped us with making sure our equipment is of quality, making certain that our facilities are of quality, making sure that our benefits and our pension remain strong. All of those are a part of it. You've heard Chief Booth talk that of course compensation's a part of law enforcement, but creating the right environment and really being very focused and mission-driven is an important part of that also. So all of those are a part of that, that package, but certainly compensation is, is going to be a challenge.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez.
Mr. Cal, how close will, Ronaug City will be with the compensation for their first responders in comparison to what other localities are paying?
We, we will still, even after they take their next step, we will still be the lowest starting pay for, for firefighters and for police officers. Sheriffs are very, they're all over the place, so I can't really say for sure that that would be the case. Now, that's not necessarily the case as you move up in ranks, but for that starting pay. Paramedics are a bit unique. They're a little bit higher rank, but they also are, and it's not, paramedics certainly, we're in a, a position of being not as competitive as we need to with our other community partners, but also places like Corillian. If we, if we tend, we tend to lose a paramedic, that paramedic's going to Corillian, not to Bonnetot County or one of the others. They're, they're going to Corillian because Corillian can pay significantly more than we're able to. And their work hours, I mean, that's the other thing is you can go to Corillian as a paramedic, you can go to Corillian as a nurse, and you can work regular shifts, not the shifts that public safety have to work. So, so yeah, that, so those are, we're trying to pick away at that, and we're going to try to start if there's money after we get those other things kind of accomplished, we'll probably focus in first on that starting pay for our police. That'll be our, our next point. And again, you all raised this consistently over the last couple of years. It's just everybody else around us is raising it even more aggressively.
And how much money will it take to get him up to the closer?
We, we haven't done that number yet. That's what we're doing, is working on it now.
Thank you.
Oh, this may be a point of contention, but I just wanted to say anyway, are we losing people to the school system?
We, I think we lose, we lose, we say we lose people all over the place, they lose people all over the place also. I mean, people, you know, again, when you've got two percent unemployment, you've got full employment. So employees can make the choice of where they're going to work, and they'll make that choice based off of compensation, work conditions, work hours, mission, all of those kinds of things. And, and certainly we have had folks who, I'll use my kind of HVAC example again, somebody